Good evening. I'm David Assad, the Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It's 6:00 PM on Thursday, September 17th, 2020. We are meeting at one government center in the committee hearing room. This meeting is being conducted pursuant to Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. General Law Chapter 38, Section 20 dated March 12th, 2020 at 8:40 PM. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 38, Section 20, Subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Our recording secretary this evening is Brittany Farrier. The lady to my immediate right is recording an audio version in Fall River Government TV. Alex Mello and the crew are recording both a video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now, and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. Present this evening in person are permanent members John Frank, Attorney Carolyn Marisette, Dan Dupere. By Zoom this evening, we have permanent member Jim Cawkins and alternate members Joe Pereira and Ricky Sahady. Also in attendance this evening is the Director of Planning for the City of Fall River, Mr. Bill Kenny, the gentleman seated at the far right of the bench. Brittany, have all petitions been considered, to be considered this evening, been properly advertised, and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals in Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48 as amended? I declare the September 16th, 2020 scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the Board, including the petitioners, abutters, anyone in support, or anyone opposed to the petition, that your presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the Chairman. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I hereby advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this Board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This Board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48 and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use, which is the subject of the petition before the Zoning Board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this Board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after a decision of the Board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the city clerk's office or from the planning department. I remind everyone that the building inspector is the zoning enforcement authority, and you are here this evening because the building inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The City Charter, Section 9-18 mandates that all multiple-member bodies develop and adopt rules or policy for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizen input on zoning-specific matters at the end of this meeting. So if someone wants to, there's a sign-up sheet, I believe, in the back of the room, or stay on Zoom, and before we close the meeting, we'll afford you the opportunity to address the Board. I disclose that an official copy of the Fall River zoning ordinance is available at the city clerk's office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. I also disclose that a new recodified edition approved by the Planning Board and City Council in accordance with Massachusetts General Law Chapter 48, Section 5, now in its grapefruit red cover, is the official copy. Are there any questions before we begin this evening? Okay. Hearing none. Prior to the meeting, Attorney Matt Burke asked to submit a motion, and it's on agenda, item 02, an item that I can't listen to. So Attorney Carolyn Marisette will chair this particular request and the motion.
Agenda item 02, South Beacon LLC, South Beacon Street, Lot H6, portion of Lot 13. It was tabled from August 20th, 2020 meeting. It's a special permit request to construct 16 condo units in the Commercial Mill District. The lot size 51,874 square feet. Attorney Burke, you filed a letter this afternoon seeking to withdraw the petition?
That is correct. For the record, Matthew Burke, I'm an attorney in the City of Fall River. I have an office at 120 Purchase Street, and I represent South Beacon LLC.
And just withdrawn, are you withdrawing, intending to submit again, or just withdrawn at this time?
At this point, I'm asking that it be withdrawn without prejudice. I'm not sure what my client's position is going to be. Just for the record, we did receive a letter in opposition. I did receive a letter today from Ms. Farrier. She was kind enough to email it to me around 11:30, 12 o'clock today. A letter from the mayor in opposition. Spoke to my client around 4:00, 4:30, and I think this is the proper step to take at this point, and back to the drawing board.
Is there any discussion, members of the Board, on the motion to withdraw? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I'll do a roll call vote for all those in favor. John Frank?
Aye.
Dan Dupere?
Aye.
Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
Joe Pereira, excuse me?
Yes.
I vote yes as well.
Thank you. Once again, thank you for taking me out of order, too. Have a good night.
Did we get David?
John, can we get David? Thanks.
Agenda item number one, Agostino Pont, 160 County Street, Lot K525. A six-month extension request for variance granted with conditions on September 19th, 2019, to subdivide the parcel into three lots, constructing a new single-family dwelling on each, waiving lot coverage area and side yard setbacks in the G District as specified on plan submitted. Good evening. Reidentify yourself, please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. My name is Dan Aguirre. I'm a senior project manager with SciTech, CEC Engineering, with addresses here in the city, as well as Dartmouth and Rainham. On behalf of the applicant, Agostino Pont, the Board granted a variance back in September. We went through the process of filing the subsequent A&R Plan that was endorsed, recorded at the Registry of Deeds. Due to the COVID pandemic, Mr. Pont had some difficulty getting an architect putting together some home plans. They were very specific to this site, the shape of some of the parcels. He had recently gotten that in, so we had just begun the site plan review process, and we realized that we were getting up to the deadline of when this would be set to expire. So we simply ask you to allow us a six-month extension so that we can get through the site plan review process and acquire building permits for the three lots and move on.
Good.
That's all.
It was the grant of a variance, so the most we can grant is six months.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Members of the Board, any questions? Was there anyone here in favor of this petition? Was there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay. Can I get a motion to grant?
I'll make a motion to grant.
Motion to grant. Dan Dupere, do I have a second?
Second.
Second. John Frank, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? John Frank, yes. Dan Dupere, yes. Carolyn Marisette, yes. Chairman Assad, yes.
Thank you.
Granted.
No, I haven't read it. I want to give you the text.
Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Brittany. I think you had my, I saw your hand up that you said, yes, you agreed with that motion to grant the six-month extension?
Yes.
Thank you. And Jim Cawkins was also voting affirmative on that. Agenda item number two, Barbara Angelini, 320 Indian Town Road, Lot W2443. This is a special permit request for a two-year grant to construct a new single-family dwelling waiving frontage and area requirements for an existing non-conforming lot in the R80 District, having previously been granted with conditions on June 20th, 2019, and having since expired, lot size 60,047 plus or minus square feet. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening to all of you. My name is Barbara Angelini. I am the owner of 320 Indian Town Road in Fall River. My residence is 92 Diane Avenue in South Yarmouth, Massachusetts. In June of 2019, there was a one-year special permit that was granted. Because of legal matters and also the COVID virus, we were unable to do all that we were supposed to do. The mobile home has been removed, and I am asking the Board for permission to allow more time and re-grant a two-year special permit.
Okay. So that's what we're doing. So we're taking the decision, your request is take the decision that we did in June of 2019, and re-grant it again, that this was a special permit to remove the existing mobile home. You've now done that.
That was done.
What, can I ask when that happened?
The end of September, beginning of October of 2019.
Okay. That's exactly where I'm going with it. Okay. And it was the building inspector who told you you needed to reapply?
I believe so, yes, the plant, to go to the planning board because it had expired.
So the only conditions we had was the mobile home must be removed prior to issuance of the building permit, and number two is subject to approval of site plan review?
Yes.
Yes. I mean, those were the only conditions that we had in our June 20th, 2019.
Yes.
So what's before is the same application, the same plan to erect or to construct the single-family home, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Members of the Board, any questions?
My only question was, I believe, I feel that she acted on it if she moved the mobile home.
Yeah, no, I think, I think-
I think we could have just allowed an extension instead of having her redo all this again.
Well, I think she acted on it. That was, I don't, did you, I didn't go through whether or not she had filed it, recorded at the registry.
I did record.
Yeah, no, I got it, and I don't. But I'm trying to think how you got here without a denial from the building inspector. But you did. You got Frank Valerio signing that. So the building inspector made the determination, it's properly before the Board. So, that being said, members of the Board, no questions. Was there anyone here in favor of this petition? Was there anyone here opposed to this petition?
There's two letters in favor.
There are two letters in favor. Thank you for reminding me. Let me find that package. Special permit, this is from Christopher Thomas, dated 9/9/2020 at 7:26 PM. I am writing to you to ask that you approve the special permit for Barbara Angelini, 320 Indian Town Road, Lot W2443, that has expired on June 20th, 2019, and approve a new one for two years to build a single-family home. Due to COVID-19, I am unable to attend the meeting this time. Thank you, Christopher Thomas, 400 Indian Town Road. Thank you. The next one was from Charlotte Thomas, who says, "I am writing to ask you that you approve the request for a special permit for a two-year grant to construct a new single-family dwelling. Item two, Barbara Angelini, 320 Indian Town Road, Lot W2443. The property belongs to my sister, and the special permit has previously been granted with conditions on June 20th, 2019, and has now expired. The property has been in our family since 1948. We would have attended the meeting if not for COVID-19 restrictions and would appreciate it if you would email the link for access to virtual meeting-to-me app." So I don't know whether Miss Thomas is out there or not, but, okay. So those were the two letters that we had concerning Indian Town Road, both in favor. Is there anyone else that wants to be heard? Okay. Can I get a motion to grant? Motion to deny with the same conditions, the mobile home has been removed is what the representation is, but, and subject to the approval of site plan review?
I'll make a motion to grant.
Motion to grant with those two conditions continuing? Okay. Dan Dupere, motion to grant with those conditions, special permit for two years, the two-year grant, yes?
Yes.
Do I have a second on that motion?
A second.
Second.
I have a second.
Carolyn Marisette, there was a delay, Jim, so Carolyn was recognized as the second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
John Frank, yes. Jim Cawkins, yes. Dan Dupere, yes. Carolyn Marisette, yes. Chairman Assad, yes. That petition is granted for two years with those same conditions.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Agenda item number three, Patricia Farrier, 285 Dexter Street, Lot T114. A variance request to construct a garage addition to the existing single-family dwelling, waiving side yard setback and lot coverage requirement in the S Single Family District, lot size 14,000 square feet.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Dan Aguirre from SciTech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of the property owner Patricia Farrier, who is the landowner of the real estate at 285 Dexter Street. For orientation purposes, as you're heading up Robeson Street, just before you get to the merge with Highland Avenue, if you come back south a little bit, you take a left, you hit Dexter Street. Two houses in on your left is the single-family home that Ms. Farrier purchased back in 1994, I believe, or just after that, when this lot was created and the home was built. At the time, it was a modest colonial-sized home with a single-stall garage that you see shown on the plan presented to you. There's also an existing deck, an existing pool to the rear yard, and an existing driveway that you also see shown on the plan that extends a good width along Dexter, and they're not shown on the plan, but along the easterly-boundary line is probably a 12-foot-high row of existing arborvitae that were planted back when Ms. Farrier purchased the home. So we have a lot that was created by a variance, 85 feet wide, 165 feet deep, 14,000 square feet. So it exceeded the lot area for the S District, however, it did ask for a reduction in frontage. The applicant would now like to construct in addition to this home, and that addition would be comprised of an additional stall garage, so that they would have a two-stall garage, additional living space on the second floor, and some additional living space on the first floor in the back of that garage as well. The purpose for this is that Ms. Farrier is now in a situation where her mother needs to move back in to her home for care, so they need the additional room to have her come back and move in. She had actually purchased two other homes up in the Highland Farms subdivision, just up the street, because they needed the bigger space. But in that subdivision, a lot of the land with elevation changes and walkout basements, she couldn't accommodate the elevation difference with having to climb other stairs or through the yard. So she backed out of two sales there and then just finally gave up on that and decided, I'm going to see if I can put an addition on my existing home as it is. So when we look at the proposal, we are seeking, the only section of relief we are seeking is the side yard setback down to five feet. Everything else, lot coverage, front yard setback, we would comply with the S District building setbacks. And what we did was I explained to Ms. Farrier that, you know, she had wanted to actually get closer. I said, "The only argument that we could potentially give is that you could theoretically construct a structure, a garage, for instance, four feet from your neighbor's property line." And that's for safety purposes and a number of other reasons not to impose on your neighbors. So she could live with that five-foot dimension, which is greater than the four, and has put together a set of plans that they can live with so that her mother could now move in with her, and she could take care of her for her continuing years. So that's the application in a nutshell. The abut to the east, as you'll see, the home is set well to the south, so there would be no impediment or no detriment to that neighbor as well. And again, simply asking for the five-yard setback and relief to the side yard for the new structure.
But you need a variance.
That's correct.
No, no, I'm, this is-
That's correct.
I'm trying to think of the-
Well, as I had put in the petition, the only other place for them to build this addition to accommodate the needs that they have logistically is in this location. If you want to add a garage stall, it really needs to be next to the existing garage. If you want to create living space, it needs to be connected to that garage as well. We didn't want to go forward because then we wouldn't meet the building setback there. We couldn't put it on the opposite side because there is no garage there existing now, and then the existing deck and pool in the rear yard. So she's come upon a circumstance that she's trying to accommodate the best that she can, and this is really the best that we could do at this time, to provide her the ample space and the use of her land so that she could have her mother move in.
Chairman, I'd like to clarify a question on my agenda showing side yard setback and lot covered, but you're clear you just want side yard, is that right?
Yeah. I don't see in our request-
Might be a typo.
-anything about lot coverage. And actually, on the plan, you'll see proposed lot coverage 23%. So-
Side yard's in.
I think we meet that requirement.
Okay.
Oh, if it was in the application.
In my application or in the one from the-
Yep. So I just-
Oh, that's right. It is there. I apologize. So no, we would not need the lot covered relief.
Under Section 10, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but the, that personal hardship isn't something for the variance to be based on. You've got this lot that was created by a variance, so now it's a conforming lot, but now by putting, you're going into that side yard, and yes, you do need a variance if we're going to do it, but whether or not you can, I understand what the proposal is. It's up to the Board. I don't know what they want to-
Yeah. I mean, logistically, the use of the property for what she needs to use it for now requires this relief. You couldn't build an additional garage space or additional living space-
Above that garage?
-anywhere else, you know, on this, on this spot. It's already a two-story structure, so it's not like we could just go a little bit with the garage and then build over the existing structure. If we did that, we'd have a three-story structure.
No, I got it. I mean, I'm looking at how it was created. You had the variance. You've got a conforming lot. You met with the side yards and, okay. Let's see who's here in favor and opposed. Any question from the members of the Board?
No.
Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? On the cheat sheet, there's no letters concerning this. Thank you, Brittany. So, members of the Board, what do you want to do? Motion to grant? Motion to deny?
I'll make a motion to grant.
Motion to grant? John Frank, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second. Jim Cawkins, any discussion on the motion? Okay. Hearing none. Members of the Board, how do you want to vote? John Frank, yes. Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Carolyn?
No.
No. Chairman Assad, no. So that petition is denied.
Thank you.
Agenda item number four, Lori Cabral, 188 Kilburn Street, Lot G157. This is a special permit request pursuant to Section 8624 to expand the existing non-conforming use by converting existing two-family dwelling into a three-family while providing new off-street parking in the A2 District, lot size 9,765 plus or minus square feet.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman. Dan Aguirre of SciTech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of Lori Cabral, who is the landowner of the existing two-family dwelling located at 188 Kilburn Street, just north of the intersection of Kilburn and Dwelly. The parcel currently has 45 feet of frontage, 9,765 square feet in area, and as I stated, contains a two-family dwelling and an existing four-stall garage located to the rear of the building with a large paved parking area. This is an A2 District that does require 10,000 square feet and 100 feet of frontage, 2,000 square feet per additional unit. So we do have a non-conforming condition with regards to frontage and area for the parcel. The two-family existing dwelling is a non-conforming use just due to the area of the parcel itself and the frontage. The proposed three-family use for the property would be not substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconformity when we're dealing just with area and frontage. And along with the proposed expansion of that non-conforming use into the three, we would be able to provide a total of 10 parking spaces on the property, far exceeding the two spaces required for each dwelling unit. I know in the past, we had had an issue with the last hearing with regards to something similar to this, but in that instance, we were dealing with a two-family district when we were asking to go from a two-family structure to a three. The two and the three are allowed within this district. There is actually no limit of how many units you can have on a parcel of land. So the nonconformity is still the nonconformity, and it has to do with the area and the frontage on the parcel. There's no expansion of the building footprint. There is, I have a number of these, but I'd rather not approach the Board. This is a copy of the building, and it actually does have an existing third floor, like many of the buildings, and many of the tenements do in Fall River. So what we would assert is that the expansion of this non-conforming use from a two to a three-family dwelling would not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use. The nonconformity is not changing. The land area is staying the same. The frontage is staying the same. Both uses are technically allowed in that A2 District. It's just the same land area that would be the nonconformity.
Okay.
Dan, where would the driveway be for the parking?
There is an existing driveway now that accesses those rear spaces, and it straddles the lot line between 188 and 176. And again, you can kind of see it on the photo. This is where the existing paved driveway is now in between those homes, and they do share that driveway. 176 veers off immediately behind the house and parks right behind their home. The driveway continues on into the large parking area and four-stall garage to the rear of the property. So with the institution of the additional parking, I think we can clearly say that it would not be substantially more detrimental to a neighborhood that does have off-street parking issues.
So, members of the Board, any comments, questions? All right. So under eight, well, is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? So under 86424, the Board has the authority to grant a special permit to change or extend a non-conforming use in accordance with this section only if it determines that such change or extension shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. The following types of changes to non-conforming uses may be considered by the Zoning Board of Appeals, change or substantial extension of the use, change from one non-conforming use to another equally appropriate or more appropriate non-conforming use. So this particular lot, we have, it's a pre-existing non-conforming, doesn't have the square footage to support a three-family, but the argument being, if we make the change or grant it, is it going to be detr, if it determines that the change or extension is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use? So-
Mr. Chairman, I move that we find that it is not more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay. Jim Cawkins makes a motion that the Board find that it's not more substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second. John Frank, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? John Frank, yes. Jim Cawkins, yes. Dan Dupere, yes. Carolyn Marisette, yes. Chairman Assad, no. Okay. So that goes forward.
Thank you.
And that works. But there were no conditions. It was just that, that's fine. That's all it's going to do. Correct? Jim, was that a two-year grant?
I thought our policy was that's an automatic, yes.
No, I know, but I just, I wanted to be clear on it. That's all.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you. Agenda item number five, Manuel and Maria Madeiras, 275 281 Blackstone Street, Lot I147. Special permit request pursuant to Section 86423B to subdivide the existing parcel into two, leaving an existing dwelling on each in the A2 District, lot size of 7,600 plus or minus square feet and 6,310 plus or minus square feet.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman. Dan Aguirre of SciTech Engineering, here this evening on behalf of Manuel and Maria Madeiras, who own the real estate at 275 through 281 Blackstone Street. For orient- For orientation purposes, Blackstone Street runs off of Dover directly behind the William Connell School off of Plymouth Avenue. Mr. Madiris has owned these properties for a while, would now like to subdivide the parcel in accordance with 86423B, allowing the three-family dwelling at 281 to remain on one lot with 7,600 square feet of land, and the existing four-family to allow that to sit on a parcel of 6,310 square feet. You can see on the proposed plan before you, we've done our best to create an ability for the owners of 275 to access the rear of their property by making sure that we had a 10-foot setback off of the existing porch that you see on the side of the building. The building at 281, again, would also exceed 10 feet in setback requirement. So that lot line right now currently runs through, if you went through there, it is a massive parking area in front of the building and behind 275 as well. So there are ample parking spaces for everyone on the property now. That will not change. There will be some specific easement language and lines drawn on the A and R plan, which you normally don't deal with. Utilities, I believe, are already separate, but not opposed at all to a condition that an affidavit be recorded prior to any conveyance stating that the utilities have been separated.
No, I mean, 11-foot frontage, but there has to be some more access.
Right, so it will have, it will have a cross easement, again, because that's, it's entirely paved now, so how everyone uses that now.
Yeah, no, that's what I, I just want to make sure that we don't have, I'm more concerned about the access to it.
Right, and leaving that one person with 11.
Parking is sufficient, but that's my, that was my big concern.
I think the board in a condition like this, again, as you have in the past regarding fencing down the middle lot line, we would not be opposed to the requirement of having no fencing. And my assertion would be is that if we're going to move forward and we prepare an easement that straddles that line, that the easement would be 10 feet on either side of the line, and we'd be okay with that as a condition as well.
Yeah, 20-foot one and a half, yeah, that's fine. Well, I shouldn't say that's fine. That's what I would be looking for, that I would recommend, yeah. Okay. Is there anyone here, board members, any questions? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Okay, can I get a motion to grant with conditions or a motion to deny? Mr. Ki- oh, Bill Kenny, I didn't ask you, do you have any comments on this particular project?
No, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the permit subject to the easement and no fencing allowed between the two properties.
Okay, and the affidavit that utilities be separated?
Yes.
Okay. That's Jim Corkins' motion to grant with those conditions. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Carol Lamarset, any discussion on the motion? None? Okay, Jim Corkins, yes?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Carol Lamarset?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. That petition's granted with those conditions.
Thank you.
Two-year.
Agenda item number six, Michael and Cynthia Kudo, 104 Fifth Street, Lot N2028. Special permit request pursuant to 86423B to subdivide the existing 5,820 plus or minus square foot parcel into two lots, leaving an existing dwelling on each in the A2 district.
Again, for the record, Dan Aguirre of SciTech Engineering here this evening on behalf of Michael and Cynthia Kudo, who are the owners of the real estate at 104 and 116 Fifth Street. The property is located at the intersection of Fifth, Brow and Spring, just south of Liberty Utilities property to our north. Currently existing on the property are two three-family dwellings with the assessors' cards, I believe, in your packages, very similarly to the last petition. We are asking to subdivide these two parcels via special permit through section 86423B. We basically split the property right down the middle, which I believe it was at some point in time. Parcel one would have 2,843 square feet, parcel two, 2,977. Parcel one would have 54 feet of frontage on Fifth and 51 feet of frontage on Brow. Parcel two would have 56 feet of frontage along Fifth Street. Again, this is in the A2 district as well. What we've done here is we've located each of the buildings, split the lot line in between the two of them at 9.5 feet each to maintain adequate access to the rear of the building in both circumstances. There is no off-street parking on the property now. It is lawn area. There is ample parking in that neighborhood, as most of the properties to the north are not residential. There are a number of utility company parcels and parking lots that are up there, so parking is not an issue in this neighborhood. Utilities are already separate, but again, we can definitely file an affidavit again as well. That's all.
Was this petition filed in the past? What, there's in our packet, it looks like something similar in 2003?
Let me see.
There was a variance that was granted, Michael Kudo, so
I don't have it in my package.
So back in September 18, 2003, the board granted the matter of Michael to divide the property to two lots, leaving an existing four-family, so I don't, on each lot waiving use and dimensional requirements in the general G district.
Let me check the assessors' cards, but
But that's, if you're making the representation to three-family, that's what the assessors' cards are showing now. We'll split it.
They did it via variance before, not special permit? What year was that?
2003, before Chairman Assad found out that the old order attached a special permit.
That everybody could do it that way? Now, I guess nobody knew back then, right? It's funny, though, because I just filed one Monday for next month's meeting, and it was the same thing that was done by a variance.
I don't need a copy of it.
Thank you, though.
Yeah.
So we'll be, we'll be splitting it.
Are you putting a fence, is it going to be a fence in between? Or, I mean, there's no, I hear you saying no off-street parking currently.
Right.
But if someone wanted off-street parking?
If someone wanted off-street parking, I think they would have the ability to do it, however
Nine and a half feet.
If you didn't want to put a fence up, we're not going to appeal it based on your, on a condition of approval of fence.
No, I know, I'm just asking the question because it's still rather tight, dense neighborhood, and then you get a fence up between them.
Right. I would think that if, if parking were to be done, it would be done by this singular landowner.
You know, I should probably ask the Director of Planning what his opinion is on that.
I'll see if he's here.
Do you have any comment about whether fencing, no fencing, off-street parking?
Well, I think Dan's thought is that if you did not require a fence, it leaves open the possibility of parking later on. I think that's legitimate.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that's what's before, a special permit. I asked, is anyone in favor, is anyone opposed? Motion to grant, motion to deny. What do you want to do?
I move to grant as presented.
As presented, affidavit, utilities separate, two-year grant?
Yeah, just as a certification of that compliance.
Okay. No, no discussion, no fencing, just leave it the way it is?
I think I'll leave that up to the neighbors.
Okay, so that's Jim Corkins' motion. Do we have a second on the motion?
No, second.
Second, Dan Dupere, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Jim Corkins?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Carol Lamarset?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. Okay, that petition is granted with those conditions. Thank you.
Clarification, Mr. Chairman, the condition being the separation of utilities.
The affidavit to be filed
Yep.
That the utilities are separate, even though he says they are, but at least we've got the affidavit there.
And is that the only
And that was it. Jim Corkins didn't have anything else attached to it.
That's okay, thank you.
And the other
And a two-year grant.
Okay, yeah.
What was the other?
Everything says four-family on both, except for the plan. The plan says three-family.
I believe the assessors' card say four, but at this point it doesn't matter.
They do, yeah, in your application, everything says four. I just want everybody to make a
This is four to eight. I mean, so it could be more, but I'm thinking that maybe they go, I don't know, they're not here.
I'll take a look.
Whatever, but it is what it is. We're not changing it.
Right, it's a multifamily structure.
We're not granting it, it's a multifamily structure. Agenda item number seven, Segundo Barrera and Gloria Pachico, 1417 Bedford Street, Lots L745 and 49. This is a variance request to subdivide the existing parcel into two with 100 foot of frontage and 11,844 plus or minus square feet for each lot, leaving an existing dwelling on one and constructing a new single-family dwelling on the second in the S District, single-family district.
Good evening again, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Dan Aguirre of SciTech Engineering here this evening on behalf of Segundo Barrera and Gloria Pachico, who I believe are here this evening, with regards to the real estate that they've purchased at 1417 Bedford Street. They purchased it back in, I believe, November of 18. This is as you're heading up Eastern Avenue and take a right onto Bedford Street, and you'll work your way towards Chairman Assad's house. At that corner of Ogden Street and Bedford, there is a very long ranch-style house, number 1417, that sits currently on this 22,512 square foot parcel in an S District, which requires 12,000 square feet and 100 feet of frontage. So the parcel is very large for the district, as you see, not only with the zoning requirements, but also with the surrounding neighborhood with parcels as small as 6,400 square feet, 5,500 square feet with 52 feet of frontage. And even across the street, we don't have parcels that comply with the area and frontage requirements. The applicants had come to me with a petition that they had another engineer draw up a little bit and asked me to take it and move forward with it and file that with the board. I did take that plan identically and submit that to the board for your consideration. What the applicants would like to do is subdivide this parcel, leaving the existing home at 1417 on one parcel, and create a new parcel on Ogden Street with 100 feet of frontage and, on this plan, 10,668 square feet of land. Moving forward, I would like to offer to the board, and this is after consideration of looking at a review letter that I had gotten some point today, haven't even been to a computer where I could print it, so I don't have it in front of me, but from memory, what we would like to do is modify the application, and it may not mean anything to you, but to the point where 1417, we would like to increase that land area to 12,000 square feet and reduce the second parcel by that additional, whatever the math comes out to be, 156, is that right? Another 156 would come off of parcel two. So moving forward, I would ask that you look at creating one non-conforming parcel with regards to area, which would be the new parcel. The newly constructed home on that parcel would meet all of the building setbacks and all of the lot coverage requirements. So the minimal
Except the area.
That's it. So the minimal relief that we're requesting tonight is a reduction in lot area for the newly created parcel down to 10,500 square feet, so 1,500 square feet shy of what the district requires at 12,000 square feet. When I spoke with the owners originally, I did go out and take a look at the property. Some of you that may be familiar with Bedford Street, as you head up Bedford Street, maybe about four streets in, you'll get to the waterworks, and there are a number of water tanks that sit up on the top of this hill. And the fact that this hill is there has created a problem for everyone that basically lives down in this neighborhood, because everything from that hill runs down to Eastern Avenue through one way or another. When we look at just our surrounding block and we take that water that's coming down, Ogden Street right now sits approximately eight feet higher than the proposed lot that we have here now. It drops down dramatically. Then our lot kind of plateaus and then drops off again, probably another eight feet to the homes that run along Eastern Avenue. Well, those elevation differences and the water that's currently on the site, nothing that's being proposed, that runoff issue has created not only an issue for us, but also for the down gradient of butters below us. Ogden Street was resurfaced a number of years ago. The city did not put any drainage in Ogden Street. They did put a berm that they thought would divert some of the water, and maybe that caught some of it. But there is still a lot of water that comes down, running through off of Ogden and upgradient through our property and then down to the lower properties below us as well. And I do know that there have been a number of letters submitted from those Eastern Avenue of butters that sit on small lots that are very congested, that they do have some water issues existing in their basement now. So sometimes when people write letters and they explain that they have water issues in their yards and their basement, sometimes that makes us feel good, because now we're, we're not creating them, but we have the ability to make them better. So when we looked at this and how we could improve the neighborhood by the granting of the variance, now, because of the topography and the soil conditions that we have on this site and the runoff issues, the granting of this variance and the construction of a home and going through the site plan review process, which we now have in the city, and we've done this on a very similar project further up on Highland Avenue, that would give us the ability to make substantial drainage improvements across our two lots. That would only not rectify some of the drainage issues we have, but also the down gradient issues. Problem is, that costs money to do those things. So the construction of the home would allow us to offset some of the drainage improvements that we are going to have to take on that normally the city would. So there's a financial hardship with trying to make this parcel buildable and dealing with the drainage issues that we have, that we need the financial gain of a home in order to spend 20 or $30,000 in drainage improvements. So although we're only speaking of relief of 1,500 square feet, which normally would be a favorable, or at least I would think would be a favorable recommendation by the board, the granting of this variance will allow us to do many more things. Now, just the fact that this board grants a variance to size of a lot, that doesn't allow us to get a building permit. And if you remember the lot that we did on Highland Avenue, that we brought way up to the street and the down gradient of butters in the little subdivision had a drainage issue, I think, Bill, you might remember, this board made it a specific condition that through site plan review, it wasn't just a normal site plan review, they wanted to make sure that the planning board, the DPW, Department of Infrastructure, all had the ability to make sure that we made drainage improvements beyond what we normally would for a single-family house to alleviate drainage issues that would be down gradient. So I think when we take this whole package and we look at this lot, the topography of the lot as how things sit, the soil conditions and the drainage, the issues that it's created in this neighborhood, this petition has, you know, allow us to address a hardship by building a house at the same time as doing all of these drainage improvements. And not only can these drainage improvements be isolated to our parcel, it's also going to extend to the existing house, 1417. So we're taking 22,000 square feet of land in this area and being able to use some of that land to alleviate drainage issues, not only for us, but for down gradient of butters as well. So moving forward, I would represent to you that we have a financial hardship with regards to trying to fix the drainage, not only for our parcels, but for this neighborhood and the zoning district in general. The topography of the lot, the size of the lot is so much bigger than everything else in the neighborhood. It's unutilized land. So we could kill a number of birds with one stone, wrapping it up with the construction of this home and allowing them the financial gain to make those improvements for the neighborhood. That's all.
Okay. Under 8634 subsection C, I don't know whether or not the board has the authority to act on it, but tell us about it. It says, "No yard or lot existing on the effective date of the ordinance from which this chapter is derived shall be reduced in dimension or area below the minimum requirement set forth in this chapter. The yards or lots created after such effective date shall meet at least the minimum requirements established by this chapter." So that's 8634 subsection C that kind of prohibits, and it uses the word "shall." So it's kind of, in my opinion, telling us you can't reduce an existing or a conforming lot to make two non-conforming lots. I understand you're making one that's going to conform.
That's correct.
So that's step number one that I just need to get my head around, how this board, even though I think we have the authority to grant variances when we have the express prohibition under the ordinance not to do it, how do we get around it? And then the other piece, and I'm sure you did your independent research, the former homeowners specifically asked that the lots be merged into one lot.
Previous owners.
Previous owners, yeah, not these owners, but then they've sold.
And that's why I didn't even want to get into the argument of the city has had these as two separate lots. I don't even
I know, but that is, but we already know, we've had this argument before about the assessors.
And that's why I didn't bring it up.
But I'm just saying, they've merged into one lot.
They are merged, and that's why we're here asking for a variance to subdivide them. So the section of zoning that you are speaking of
Yep.
If that was a So the section of zoning that you are speaking of, if that was a black-and-white issue, this board wouldn't exist when it comes to lot size. There'd be no granting of variances. So that's a viable-
But if you have a conforming lot, it's the rare, I don't, I can think of maybe one, since I've been on the board, where we've had a conforming lot and created two non-conforming lots.
I think in many instances, we have conforming lots and we subdivide them.
Perfectly conforming lots and made them two non-conforming?
Many, many non-conforming lots. Well, for a number of different reasons.
Even though, thank God, it's not precedent-setting, but that's what I remember and that's what we have in front of us this evening.
However, you know, as I discussed, I would see, and again, just from taking the plan that was given to me, I would have recommended, and I am recommending now and offering to you, that the lot on the corner, we do reconfigure to make that a conforming lot.
Make it conforming. Okay. Members of the board, any questions? Is there anyone in favor of this petition? Is there anyone opposed to this petition?
Yes.
Okay, I hear somebody say yes. Are you here or are you over there?
Yes. Mr. Daniel McDonald is our lawyer. Are you present, Mr. McDonald?
We received, we received a letter from Attorney McDonald. I was gonna, is Dan here?
He's on.
Oh.
I believe that's him.
Dan, is that you in the corner?
Mike's on.
Dan McDonald, is that you in the upper right-hand corner?
Tell Alex what this is there.
Yeah, Alex, I think he's got it lit up.
Yeah.
Dan? When you get old, you can't see.
He's got no-
Want to read the letter until it gets on?
I'll read, I'll be happy to read the letter, but we did get some letter of opposition, yes.
We are the homeowners at 50 Eastern Avenue.
Could you identify yourself for us, please? I'll let you speak.
My name is Lynn, excuse me, Lynn Souza, and we are the homeowners at 50 Eastern Avenue, and we have severe drainage problems.
We, that house has already been, has already lost a lawsuit because of the land, the land grade changes that it's made. All right, it's, it put us in a gully. And, all right, let me start from the beginning, I'm sorry.
No, that's good. You take your time, madam, you start from the beginning and tell us what you want.
I'm trying to fight a good fight here. We're so much worse off than we were because the people that own the house, not before them, before that, have asked for a variance, requested a variance at that property before in 2002. But now we're so much worse off. The city workers said when they fixed that street, we would be all right, but now we're getting sinkholes in our yard. This spring, I got 18, 40-pound bags of dura, and it didn't even fill one of the sinkholes we had back here. And we've been, it's terrible. And the property along the line of 1417 Pleasant Street and Bedford Street is in a gully. And it's already been, we've already had a major land grade change in that lot. A lawsuit was won against the original owners of that property, and a retaining wall was built. In some areas, that retaining wall is 10 to 12 feet high, and the people below are still taking on water. One woman put trenches in her basement so that way the water would be directed right towards the drain. Now, these are problems that did not exist before 1417 Pleasant Street was-
Bedford Street.
-Beverford Street, I'm sorry, 1417 Bedford Street was built. They just keep putting us further and further in a gully. I have a picture here of what it was like, can you see this? This was before the land grade change, and then they just come and put rocks and build up air property.
Is this, madam, is this what you had presented with your letter? Is it the same photograph?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Now, we have another one here where this is-
Did you see?
This is our yard, this is the slight rock, and this is Ogden Street up here. Now, on the other side, it's not quite this deep, but it is deep also, and they're just gonna have to raise it higher because of the Ogden Street. We don't even, we own property, basically, Ogden Street, and we don't even have access to it because they've put us in such a deep, like a cliff over there, what Big Bold is holding up the road. I'm telling you, it's awful, the situation we put us in. Ogden Street, at the end of Ogden Street is somebody's driveway. There's no access to turn around or anything.
If somebody could go right to the end of our property and come right off the cliff right into our backyard through our fence, I mean, it's a terrible, terrible situation.
We need help. We don't need more people building around us. They said that retaining wall would mitigate our problems. They said, "Build it fixing the street would mitigate our problems." I've been living here for 63 years, and it just keeps getting worse and worse, all the time with all the development around us.
People have diced yards around us. We can't have a diced yard because we have sinkholes in our yard, because we're getting everybody else's drainage, basically.
We're having so many problems. We have a little retaining wall in our yard that's going out. Our fence is on either side, on the side of Ogden Street and the side of 1417 Bedford Street is acting as a retaining wall. All the trees, the roots are getting all washed away.
On a good grain, the water just rinses right through that retaining wall. It looks like a fountain with about 20 shoots of water coming out of there.
It just pours right out.
It goes off through our cellar.
We used to have a cellar that was in activities. Now, we avoid our cellar, we're afraid of mold. No matter what we do, the water just keeps coming.
That's our story, basically.
Okay. Thank you, ladies. Attached to your letter, attached to your letter that you submitted to the board, there was also a petition that was signed by several neighbors?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
These are homeowners, homeowners adjacent to us on Eastern Avenue and homeowners in the back that are aware of our problems. Even the woman that lived at 1417 Pleasant Street, I mean Bedford Street, put French drains back there, and she was still complaining of water coming into her cellar.
As a matter of fact, I believe that's why she put the two properties together, because she would tell me she wanted to sell it, and I used to tell her, "I'm gonna get a lawyer" because-
And then she started having problems. One rainy spring, her cellar started flooding. So then she was aware of what we were going through, but only in a more minor sense. So she did put some, I think, French drains in there along the two property lines, but seems to just have made it worse.
Okay, thank you, ladies. I think Attorney McDonald is there. Dan, are you there? So if he's there, let's let him speak, because he wrote a letter and I'd prefer his... Dan, it's all yours.
For the record, Attorney Daniel McDonald with offices in Fall River at 139 South Main Street. I represent the ladies who have just spoken and their brother, who own the properties at Eastern Avenue that abut the subject property. Now, the owners of the Bedford Street property have no hardship with their current use of the property. They haven't articulated any, any use. They suggest perhaps that to solve a water problem, they build a house. Well, why don't they build a retention pond instead, and they'll solve their problem? But I also submitted to the board with my memorandum, past zoning decision, where the owners of the Bedford Street property have sought a variance in 2002. They submitted a plan. They wanted to create the exact same lots that the current petitioner wanted to create, according to the original petition provided by Mr. Aguiar's suggestion tonight. On that occasion, in 2002, the board found there were no circumstances that met the prerequisites of Chapter 48, Section 10. There's no hardship. What they want is gonna be contrary to the zoning law, the express provision not to reduce the size of a lot. They want to create two, presently, they want to create two non-conforming lots, they want to make one now conforming and the other non-conforming. The hardship to the butters is great. The presence of another house is not gonna solve that problem, despite whatever Mr. Aguiar says. There's gonna be a loss of the premier area, they're gonna have to have a driveway to get access. That's gonna be a source for another source of water runoff to the properties and the adjoining properties. So I respectfully suggest that there's plenty of reasons to deny this petition, there's no reason to justify it, there's nothing under 48, there's no hardship, and then using their property as it is right now. There's nothing that says they need because of a physical condition, a new house, it's an absurd proposition. So I respectfully ask the board to deny the variance.
Thank you, Attorney McDonald. I will, your memorandum that you submitted will be part of the record. I'm not gonna read it in, if that's okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond?
Yeah, I want you to respond.
As I previously stated with regards to the provisions of 48 and the proposed hardships that are presented to you, the same hardships that Mr. McDonald feels his clients have with regards to drainage issues that have been put onto them are the same drainage issues that have been put onto this landowner by improvements to Ogden Street and lands above us that have now put them in a financial hardship that they can't fix these drainage issues without moving forward with the creation and the sale of an existing home. And by lumping these all together, that would give them the ability to do quite a bit in this neighborhood. And it will take a lot of work to get the city and DPW to review the drainage proposals that we put before them, for them to be comfortable with that. This project cannot move forward until the city of Fall River determines that we're doing ample drainage improvement to this neighborhood to satisfy these neighbors' down gradient. Should we have to? No. The city should take it upon itself to correct the drainage in Ogden and some of those other quasi-private roads that run up the hill to the water tanks. But our applicant has the ability to do some of that on-site here. Now, whether that's running a drain along parallel of Ogden Street now and then another one behind us in a series of swales to get the water towards Bedford and not letting it run downhill, we're not at that point. And that's not really the zoning board's charge to approve a plan like that. However, they can be very specific in the conditions of approval that require us to meet the requirements of the city of Fall River Planning Department, Engineering Department, and DPW. And like I said, we've done that on past projects and it's worked out very well. This board is not granting a building permit. They are not. They are simply granting relief of 1,500 square feet of land to create this additional parcel. The condition of approval moving forward, it would be in the hands of the other city departments to make sure, through review, in 2002, there was no site plan review. In 2002, there was no promotion of any type of drainage improvement on these parcels to aid any of the butters' down gradient from us. 2002 petition has nothing to do with this petition. I think we've presented a clear and concise argument and have added on caveats to ensure that these neighbors get taken care of, the same way we would have hoped our upgradient neighbors would have taken care of us. But we're the ones before you now trying to resolve this issue. Again, the homeowners have come in here only within the last two years, moved into the property, using their backyard, they have drainage concerns. Yes, Ogden Street sits, like I just said, eight feet higher than our lot. So the same water that comes onto us, now then, all they're doing is picking up the little bit of water from our two parcels before it hits down gradient of us. And I think when you listen to the neighbors and the homeowners, most of their concern, they're telling you that the city said this, and the city was gonna fix this, and they were gonna take care of our drainage, and this was gonna improve it. Well, it didn't. That wasn't these landowners. These landowners are the only ones that are stepping up and saying, "We will live with..." If the DPW decides that we've gotta create some elaborate drainage system-
This is the zoning board of appeals.
Correct. But if they decide, you know, the drainage improvements are gonna cost $100,000, my clients are just gonna not abide by the variance and not subdivide the land. But if they can do something reasonable and accommodate everyone, this is an opportunity, and that's how it should be looked at. I think with regards to hardship, we have topography, we have soil conditions, we have financial hardship put on this land, not financial hardship to the landowner, to this parcel, to fix the drainage on this parcel and down gradient parcels, that takes some money to do that. That's a financial hardship, and that's allowed under 48.
Why develop?
Wait, 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 madam. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Dan, Attorney McDonald, would you like, goddamn.
My clients are prepared to put themselves in a position to have to accept the philanthropy from Mr. Aguiar's clients. He fails to recognize that 1417 owns this lot, all right? There's no topography issue for 1417, all right? There's simply none. There's a house there, it's built, it's existing. So topography is not a hardship for 1417. So again, urge you to deny. In fact, the fellows in 2002, this only board of appeals, I'm sure, heard a lot of arguments, the support of the proposition to permit the division. But it was denied then, there's been no change now. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney McDonald.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just quickly, there were no mention in the minutes with regards to drainage improvements at the expense of this landowner. And again, 1417 was built in 1955. So it's only been land up gradient of 1417 that's been constructed since. So 1417 hasn't created this drainage issue.
Okay.
General development in the city of Fall River may have, but again, this is an opportunity to rectify some of that.
Mr. Chairman, the zoning board ministers don't set out the arguments back and forth at length, all right? They summarize. So that's a suspicious argument. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney McDonald. Okay. Is there anyone else in favor of this petition? Is there any... Favor? Wait, 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 let me see if there's anybody in favor. Is there anyone opposed to this petition other than the people that we've heard from? Okay. Phil Kenny, would he?
Yeah, I think this is germane to the issue. If this moves past the zoning board, it's gonna wind up at the site plan review committee, so I sort of anticipate what we might be talking about. Every site plan review approval letter contains this boilerplate paragraph in every one of them that says, "The work in the construction on this lot that we're approving shall not increase the runoff of stormwater onto any adjacent properties." And if it does, you gotta go back and fix the problem, or you're not gonna get an occupancy certificate.
That's correct.
So are you suggesting that your project is actually gonna improve the situation for your butters?
Absolutely. Because that's, only if it's a condition of this board-
Well, that's what I was gonna say.
And that's what we did on the other ones. It wasn't just blanket site plan review where you just don't increase the drainage issues.
Yeah.
We will make sure that whatever plans we put together that are reviewed by your engineer and by your DPW clearly show an improvement in the existing drainage condition.
That's what I was gonna suggest, if it comes to that, that that should be very precise so that the site plan review committee understands what the zoning board really wants to happen here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, so we've heard from everyone. Can they get a motion to grant with conditions or motion to deny? Have they met their burden and have they overcome the issue of 8634 subsection C? So, motion to grant, motion to deny, what do you want to do?
I make a motion to deny. I don't believe we have the authority when it's already conforming.
Motion to deny. Attorney Carol Lamarrasette, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. John Frank, any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor? John Frank? Yes. Jim Corkin?
Oh, favor of denying, yes.
Favor of denying. Jane Dupere?
Yes.
Yes. Carol Lamarrasette, yes. Attorney Chairman, yes. So, that petition has been denied. Thank you all.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, moving forward, there will be no conforming parcel that will be allowed a variance to create non-conforming lots.
I think the issue, and I'm not, I'm one person on the board, I'm reading the ordinance.
Well, no, but you brought it up.
I bring it up because 8634 is causing me lots of concern when you have a conforming lot and now we're gonna carve it up and make two non-conforming lots. I think that the prohibition under 8634 subsection C tells the board, can't do it.
Even without a variance?
Even with, I don't, I don't think we have the authority. Once it says, "Shall be reduced," no yard or lot existing on the effective date of the ordinance from which this chapter is derived shall be reduced in dimension or area below the minimum requirement set forth in this chapter, period. Next sentence, "Yards or lots created after such effective date shall meet at least the minimum requirements established by this chapter."
No, and I understand exactly what that says.
That's what it says. So, the answer is, as I'm reading it and I'm preparing for these, I see it and it gives me hot- I see it and it gives me heartburn. And I say, "I don't know, maybe we need to have somebody take that up on a deal."
Well, just moving forward, I want to know that that's the interpretation so that I can guide my-
I think you hear me say that every time I see a conforming lot that's going to get-
I think it's only been the last two or three meetings that you've brought that up, but... No, but that's fine. I'm just trying to move forward.
No, I understand what you're asking, and I'm telling you that I don't remember that many conforming, absolutely conforming lots that are being asked for to be too nonconforming. And I'll go back and look, but I just... Could be I'm getting old. Maybe I should find something else. All right?
Do you want me to look at it?
No, not right now. Agenda item number eight. AAFR Inc. and 607 South Main Street, vacant lot and 607 South Main Street lots, G52 and 70. This is a variance request to modify lot lines for the purposes of alleviating an existing encroachment in the BL district. Posters were subdivided in May of 1999 by granting a variance, but the subsequent subdivision plan did not account for the existing porch and stairs at front of dwelling.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, Dan Aguirre. Board members, as the chairman just stated, this is a request to modify a lot line in between two lots that was created through a variance in May of 1999. In your package, you will see a copy of the ANR endorsed subdivision plan. And at this time, on these two lots, there were two homes. Subsequently, the home in the front burnt down. And I was trying to get the subdivision plan myself.
And whoever did it, I'm trying to remember who stamped it and put it...
Roy that did it.
Obvious. I'm amazed.
Well, and what ended up happening was, so on South Main Street, this is just north of Academica Restaurant Club. That's G05 Lot 3, you see, to the right of your plan, the larger parcel. So what ended up happening is, Academica had purchased that parcel after the home had burned. And at that time, and if you look at the subdivision plan, and on the plan that I have, you look at the larger one that's blown up. So here's Academica. Originally, this rear home was accessed... See this lot line? You see it labeled on your plan as existing lot line? It says lot line to be eliminated. Came down and came across the front of this building. You can see it on your plan. This is the existing lot line. And it matches what's on the subdivision plan, the original one. At the time, the surveyor apparently hadn't located the existing porch or steps that belonged to this back building. So the original homeowners in this parcel and the owners of Academica could never come up with an agreement of how to resolve this issue. And that's why they've never moved to making some additional parking area. This parcel was foreclosed on maybe a year ago. The new owners, after having a discussion with Academica, decided upon, okay, yes, it does make sense for us to resolve this encroachment. So what this petition will do is now create... You see this bold line? That's going to be the new lot line.
4.7 feet off the house, so they get access to the porch.
So now they will have access. And so now, Academica lot that they purchased here will now be contiguous to their lot line, getting rid of this four-foot strip that used to go with the rear homeowner. And then in addition to that, Building 607 will also acquire this rear area for parking for themselves. Right now, their lot line is here. They've been utilizing this. They put their dumpsters in there and a couple of vehicles, and it took us a year to get the vehicles out of there. So it's basically a win-win for everybody. We're not creating any new additional lots. We're providing them with the same amount of legal frontage. They will acquire additional access as well through an easement to gain access to this rear portion of the property and at the same time alleviate the existing encroachment of the front steps. Technically, right now, these people can't walk through their front door. They can't get there.
Cannot. That's correct.
So this will resolve that issue. And the new landowner understood that. Previous landowner, we couldn't necessarily have a normal conversation.
And there's going to be a pass and repass so they can get in there?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Yeah, no, this was a horror shot.
Yeah. Looks a lot better out there now, though.
Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Members of the board, any questions about this particular petition? Nope. Can I get a motion to grant? Motion to deny. What do you want to do?
I make a motion to grant.
Motion to grant, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Carol Lamarrasette, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor. John Frank, yes. Jim Corrigan?
Yes.
Yes. Jane Dupere?
Yes.
Carol Lamarrasette?
Yes.
Chairman Assad, yes. Okay, that petition is granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Okay. Agenda item number nine. Lycos Prop LLC, care of Peter Salino Esquire, 388 Rhode Island Avenue, Lot E-8-3. Variance request to operate a blood plasma center medical clinic in the BL district. Lot size 176,418 plus or minus square feet.
Good evening. For purposes of the record, my name is Peter Salino. I maintain a law office at 550 Locust Street here in Fall River, and I represent the... Excuse me, the applicant landowner. With me tonight is the principal of Lycos Properties LLC. For your indulgence, board members, I'd like to briefly go into what is plasma before I get into the petition, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
No, I was going to ask you to do that before we even started because we need to hear about it.
Thank you. So this is a little bit of a science project for me. And so this is what the research and material bears out. Plasma is a portion of the blood that consists primarily of water and proteins, and it controls bleeding and fights infection. So the idea behind this plasma withdrawal is that the individual who's going to donate is hooked up to a machine through which your quote "whole blood" is pulled out. They separate the blood from the plasma, and then they put the blood back into you. The plasma is then used for medicine, mostly immunology-type medicines.
COVID-19 research.
I suppose.
Oh, that's what they're doing. Go ahead.
So relative to, you know, the operation and how one donates, the machine or the process is called plasma pharesis, and that is the process through which your whole blood is extracted and divided. The applicants or donors can go twice in a seven-day period. Okay? The initial session requires physical screening as well as a blood test for infections and HIV, et cetera. So probably a very broad generality, but it's only for healthy people. Donors cannot be unhealthy because they would not pass the initial screening. The process takes 45 minutes to cycle the whole blood out, extract the plasma, and inject the whole blood back into you. And ultimately, the blood is taken, or the plasma, I'm sorry, is taken off-site to a laboratory. So the fundamental issue here was that when you look at the approved uses in a BL district, there's no... Mr. Hathaway deems this a medical office, and there's no such permission for a so-called medical office-
That is correct.
...in this district. So that's why we're here. And the site, for those of you who are unfamiliar with 388 Rhode Island Avenue, is the former Ocean State job lot next to Mickey Doyle's. The ask here is to alter or to grant a variance to alter the use from a local business district to allow for this particular tenant to operate at this site. The operation that is being requested of my client is as follows. They're asking for hours of 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, so a 60-hour week. The location would house, based on our math and the projections given to us by the client, 15 patients or donors per hour. The patient population is anticipated to be somewhere between 750 and 900 at any given cycle. And we're advised that at any given time, the premises is only about 60% occupancy.
What do you mean by cycle? 750 a cycle? What's that mean?
It means... I should rephrase that. It's a fair point. Patient groups that they're dealing with at a time. So the statistics nationally, this is a national tenant and company, are that at the high end, they're servicing at any location 3,000 people at a time.
Would I be able to jump in?
Yeah, sure. From- Just say your name for the record.
Ari Kapatos of Lycos Properties LLC. And from the record, from our tenants, we received information that the center would be roughly around 60% occupied, and the 1,500 number is normally a weekly patient. So they would say, you know, take that number and multiply it by 0.6 and divide it by the hours of operation. You're looking at roughly 15 people in the lot an hour. So... The visits, so as I said in my opening, each donor can come in twice
per seven-day cycle. The donors receive compensation. The compensation is $40 to $60. That's a corporate policy. The company feels as though that's an appropriate compensation for taking that 45 minutes out of your day to facilitate medical research. We're advised that the employment opportunity here is for 50 to 70 employees. The employees all make above minimum wage and they're jobs with benefits. About half of that number would be on-site at a given time. The plan indicates that there's 167 parking spaces. I think that's important. I went to the site yesterday, drove around a little bit to kind of get a feel for it. So in terms of the surrounding neighborhood, this plaza is unique to me in the sense that it's bounded on the north by America Street and/or Lisbon Street. Ludlow Street seemingly runs through it. Tucker Street bounds it to the south, and Walgreens also has or the ability to pass and repass through the Walgreens parking lot. So it's submitted to you that based on the number of parking spaces and the proposed operation, I don't think we have any issues with density or traffic flow. The operation's completely housed within the building. The proposal, as you can see on the plan, is that the subject is about 10,000 square feet. So it's a plentiful space, obviously, if it housed Ocean State job lot. And finally, it was in the literature that I've read that they donate... This company donates annually $3 to $5 million to its donors as a result of these donations. From my client's perspective, the tenant is certainly a viable tenant and an important anchor to his property. He started the process, if anyone has been out there, of repaving the parking lot in front of Mickey Doyle's and Aaron's. And there's currently a significant plan, $320,000?
Yeah.
There's a $320,000 plan to update that plaza in general, inclusive of paving the front, new signage, new facades?
Yeah, new facades, new paint. We're completely redoing the entire plaza to make it more aesthetically pleasing. I purchased it around a year and a half ago, and there's been a substantial amount of plans to really rejuvenate it, to make it more aesthetically pleasing to our commercial and residential neighbors. So...
And so that is the proposal. I mean, I think we can all understand that Rhode Island Avenue and Mariano Bishop Boulevard is a commercial corridor. The use is certainly unique and not an allowed use, which is why we're here. But I don't think it derogates from the intent of the bylaw. I think the hours are reasonable, obviously.
Say that again. You don't think it derogates from the bylaw? The bylaw absolutely prohibits that kind of medical-
The intent. The intent. I think when you read the preamble to the bylaw-
Good, I got it.
-the intent is to make the most appropriate use of land.
Good.
Okay? And so this, to me, is a commercial-type use. There's no surgery going on. There's no, you know, medical treatment of any sort. It's a mechanical process through which this plasma is separated and taken off-site.
Yeah. The planning board, I guess when they did it, they were two... There was the medical overlay district, and I think-
Yes.
...we've only got one, which is-
Right.
...where Prima Care is. And the other location that this could happen at, if we go by what the building inspector has determined, the medical district or the G district.
Right.
And, okay. I just want to be... I mean, there were other places, two other districts that this particular activity could take place at.
Okay.
So, no, I'm just...
But the client doesn't own the property there.
I got it. I understand. Shape, topography, soil condition, 48, section 10. Let's hear some more about that, please.
I mean, to me, the only real hardship here is the empty structure. There is no shape, topography, soil. That's not disputed.
Okay.
It's just the location in the center where job lot used to be?
Yes.
It's not the entire building?
No, no, no. Just that empty-
The entire building's grayed out in the plan, so I wasn't sure.
That's right. No, just the empty space in the middle there, so to speak.
Oh, it's just the 12,000. That's it, not the whole building?
That's correct. So on the far left, which would be the northerly side, is this Taekwondo studio. And to the right, you have a nail place, a smoke shop, Aaron's, Domino's Pizza, so Mickey Doyle's.
Got it. Okay. Is there members of the board, any questions before I ask if anybody's in favor or opposed to this? Anyone out there? Nope. Is there anyone in favor of this petition? Is there anyone opposed to this petition? Okay. Well, an interesting business model. So, members of the board, what do you want to do? It's in a district that doesn't allow for medical, and I would suspect that because of blood and plasma, the medical moniker may be correct, but I also think you're dealing with biological hazard material, I guess if there's something, needles and stuff in the area. So... Do we want to grant? Do we want to deny?
I'll make a-
Wait, wait, wait. Let me ask one other question. I'm looking at the director of planning, if he has any input before I just ignore him down there.
Well, I just heard Mr. Salino say that he didn't see where the hardship was. Did you want to clarify that comment, or...
No, I think there's no literal... In any use variance I've ever done in any city or town, a lot of times there is no literal hardship relating to shape, the 48 elements. And I don't think that's-
No, but this board, let me be clear. The board has the authority to grant a use variance. I mean, I... There's no question about that.
So the clarity is just, I can't point you to one. So I-
So under 48, section 10, those elements, shape, topography, soil condition. But the use element would be if there was other medical facilities around it, an argument would be, I think could be, if there were other medical facilities in that area, and this is-
Yeah. And I put in my petition quasi-medical. You know, right to the east, there's a dentist's office. There's a chiropractor's office in this parking lot. There's a Walgreens. You can get a flu shot at Walgreens. That's a needle. That's biohazard. It's in the same parking lot.
I mean, I'm assuming the biohazard's not a significant issue. Are you going to have proper...
Yeah, it's... The process is FDA-licensed and so on.
Are we closed? Or are we still voting?
No, no. We're done talking. I just wanted to ask Bill. So do we have a motion to grant, motion to deny?
I'm going to make a motion to grant for similar reasons. I'm surrounded by medical stuff. There's dentist's office across the street. There's another one across... Whatever that is. There's-
It's down the street.
CVS. There's another medical RX place right on- Yeah, Doctors or whatever it is, right? Yeah, Doctors Plus, I think it's called. So saying that it's not a medical area, I don't think is valid, but whatever. So with my motion to grant the change in use to allow this, site plan-
The use var-
With the site plan review, I think has to happen because for parking purposes and so on.
Yeah, no, I think it has to happen no matter what. Yeah, okay.
And I'm sure under their guidelines through the business, its model itself has to be controlled, FDA, whatever you need to do for a certain reason.
It is. This board is only dealing with the use.
Right.
All the other stuff is other boards and other licensing. Okay. So we have a motion to grant by John Frank. Do we have a second on the motion?
I'll second.
Who's that? Dan Dupere. Dan Dupere, second. Okay, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Okay, let's vote. All those in favor? John Frank, yes. Jim Corrigan?
Yes.
Yes. Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Yes. Carol Lamarrasette?
No.
No. Chairman Assad, no. So that petition is denied. Thank you. But that was a good presentation. Agenda item number 10. Dan Quintel, care of Peter Salino, 190 Madison Street, Lot M34. Special permit request to section 86424 to convert the existing nonconforming two-family dwelling into a three-family while providing new off-street parking in the S District. Lot size 8,438 plus or minus square feet.
Good evening, honor of the board. For purposes of the record, returning Peter Salino, 550 Locust Street, Fall River, Massachusetts. The petitioner-applicant is Dan Quintel, who is sitting immediately here to my right. The subject property be- who is sitting immediately here to my right. The subject property before you is located at one ninety Madison Street. The, for purposes, to steal words from Dan Aguirre, for purposes of orientation, the site sits behind the Holy Name Church, fronting on Madison Street. In that section of the city, Madison Street, is a one-way going north. The use of the subject property is not allowed because this is an S District and it's a two-family house. Additionally, the site is not appropriate for, from a dimensional perspective. You need twelve thousand square feet, as the board knows, and you need a hundred feet of frontage, as the board knows. In this instance, per the plan, we have seventy-two feet of frontage and a hun- eight thousand four hundred feet, square footage. So we're deficient in both the size of the lot and the use. And so it's submitted to you that in all those ways, the use is not allowed and the lot would be non-conforming. As we've heard in a prior petition this evening, under section eighty-six four twenty-four, the existing non-conforming use can be expanded by special permit if this board finds that the proposal is not more detrimental than the existing non-conformity. Number one, the client had an existing conditions plan done. I think it's really important to note and understand that on that plan, and specifically with reference to the third floor of the dwelling as it sits, there are currently three bedrooms on the third floor and a bathroom. And then sort of to the southwest corner, an open room. So the proposal does not contemplate adding a third floor or changing any exterior boundaries. This plan indicates that there are already three bedrooms up there and a bathroom up there. So I think that's very important when we talk about what's detrimental and what isn't, and we use that standard to analyze the situation. So the only new addition on the third floor is a kitchen. And for, for those reasons, I think there's no detriment. Second, we've created parking. Now, the site, I walked out at the site and along the church property line, which would be the northwesterly corner, there's a garage there now. It's a two-car garage. The site plan that we've submitted shows two parking spaces in the garage and two parking spaces outside the garage, sort of in front or to the east of the garage. So those would be existing. That's there. There's a driveway along the northerly property line. What is contemplated is an additional two spaces on the southeast boundary line of the property. The proposal is a twenty by twenty set of spaces there made of, or, you know, finished with gravel to temper any kind of runoff. And there's a letter of injection in the file that cites runoff. And I would submit to you that one of the things that's important to understand here is the roof isn't changing, there's no more pervious, I'm sorry, strike that, impervious material being added to the site. So I don't, in my view, in my opinion, that's not an issue. And then finally, with respect to traffic, I think it's also important to understand that by eliminating a bedroom on the third floor, we're probably eliminating the density within the building and therefore the traffic. The street, I drove around the block a couple of times and the street is a busy street. Obviously, it carries you from New Boston Road to President Avenue and it's a one-way street. So the butter had expressed some concerns relative to traffic, but I don't think our proposal increases or significantly hampers the traffic situation there, based on what I saw. I think a lot of people cut over so they don't have to go through the lights on Robeson Street. And I don't see how the addition of these two off-street parking spaces and an apartment on the third floor, which again is less dense than what's there, would create any more traffic. And so for all those reasons, I would submit to you that the proposal is not more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use.
But you're adding another family, another, you're adding another dwelling unit.
We are adding another dwelling unit, yes. And I don't think, for all the reasons stated, it's more detrimental.
I, I understand your argument. I'm just asking you that.
Yes.
You're saying you don't think, but you've got a whole, another living dwelling unit with a, being put in this single-family district from a two-family pre-existing non-conforming, now turning it into a three-family.
That is correct.
That's, so I was just trying to get my head around if I'm adding one, why isn't it more, why isn't it more dense? Why isn't there more activity?
Sure. You want to speak to that, Dan?
The second floor unit would now become much smaller than it currently is. You would go from a five-bedroom unit to two two-bedroom units. So you're, you're going to have less people in each of the units. A five-bedroom could have up to nine people. You're not going to have five people.
Unrelated?
On each floor.
I'm just, I'm just, one of the ornaments, Pivriss just talks about not more than five people unrelated, living under the same.
Well, you could have three generations.
I got, I got, I was just baiting Attorney Salino.
Can't bait me because I have a mask on.
Okay, I got the argument. I got it. But it's not up to me, it's up to the board and everybody else. So there is any, is there anything else you'd like to tell us?
No, thank you.
Members of the board, any questions?
Well, I just, you said this is similar to the petition earlier, but the petition earlier, it, it was for an A two district that allowed two-family, three-family. You're in a single-family district that doesn't allow this type.
Right. And I think it's similar because it's the same section of the bylaw and the litmus test is the same. And I don't think it's unlike, I've driven around, I mean, there are multifamilies in the, in the district. And I know each petition stands on its own two feet, but I had a similar petition on the other side of the church, on Hanover Street, that passed. And it had this, in my view, the same constraints that this one has.
Okay. Karen, was that an adequate answer?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, so you're, you're going to be utilizing the existing driveway?
Correct.
To the?
To the north.
North.
Along the church.
And then on the south side of the house, you're putting, looking for a new curb cut?
That is correct.
Two additional spots?
Yes.
Where the purple fence is, right?
Yes.
Got it?
Yep.
Okay. So, is there anyone here in favor? Is there anyone here opposed? We didn't get, yeah, I hear yes.
Yes. I'm the one who submitted the letter.
Mr. Comstock?
Yes, my name is Daniel Comstock. I appreciate your time. I appreciate the new property owner wanting to expand the property to a three-family and everything. Based on everything you're saying, it's not zoned for that. That's the first thing. But the other part is I have two properties that are bought. Now you're going to have increased density in terms of vehicles there and basically parking in my backyard and the other landowners in the area also would have a similar problem as well. That's, you know, a concern. And it is a highly populated area, especially the church, parking and everything, and the hospital down the road, the businesses. So it is going to increase parking concerns and everything, even with putting the off-street parking, because it's not just the tenants that are there, it's the visitors and additional parking. So it, it does put a hardship on the current residents who are paying property taxes to live in the area with single-family dwellings.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Comstock?
No. You know, I did mention about the drainage. I'm concerned that, you know, today it's two vehicles on one side, then it's expansion of that further to add additional parking. So I'm concerned about additional expansion of said driveway to the backyard as well. So, and that again would further encroach upon my livability on my property and my space in terms of quality of life and privacy.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Can I respond to that, please?
Yes, please. Well, if your lawyer wants you to.
Certainly.
There are going to be more people on the property inherently, because before I purchased the property, there was one lady living in the home. It was a two-family home with one occupant. So whether it's a two-family or a three-family, there are going to be more people in the house. That's, that is accurate. The question becomes whether if it's a two-family versus a three-family, are there going to be more people if we add another unit? In my opinion, I don't think there is going to be more people. I think it's going to be pretty much, pretty similar, considering we're eliminating a bedroom and now separating that unit into two.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. So, do we have, it's eighty-six four twenty-four is the section that we have to deal with. The Board of Appeals, let me just read it just so everybody knows and we get it on the record. The Board of Appeals may grant a special permit to change or extend a non-conforming use in accordance with this section only if it determines that such change or extension shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. The following types of changes to non-conformant uses may be considered by the zoning board. A, change or substantial extension of the use. B, change from one non-conforming use to another, equally appropriate or more appropriate non-conforming use. So that's the standard we have to go by to decide whether or not we grant the special permit. So we have to determine whether or not the extension shall be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use. So, do we have, have they met that burden? If they have, then let's get a motion to grant. If they haven't, let's get a motion to deny.
All right, I'll make a motion to deny stating that it will be more detrimental.
Okay.
To the area.
So John Frank makes a motion to deny that, makes a motion that it shall be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use. Do we have a second on that finding?
Second.
Second. Carol Lamarrasette, any discussion on the motion? Okay. All those in favor? John Frank. Jim Carkins?
No.
No, you're, you don't agree with John?
That's correct.
Okay. Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Yes. Carol Lamarrasette?
Yes.
Jaman Assad, yes. So the vote is four to one that it's substantially more detrimental for the neighborhood. Jim Carkins was the one who disagreed. Okay. So that petition is denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Salino.
So this is the wrong bylaw now?
Yeah. But I, I, the language didn't change, but the hell book is out. It's the new Sandin College.
Sure.
Brinkton College, whatever. What's the next one? Number eleven. Ellen M. Real Estate Group, Inc., care of Arthur Frank Jr. Esquire, one hundred Osborne Street, lot G twenty forty-five, special permit request pursuant to section eighty-six four twenty-four to expand the pre-existing non-conforming office use to office and professional counseling services use while reconstructing, right, reconstructing pre-existing non-conforming building structure and parking area pursuant to eighty-six four twenty-five in the R four district, lot size forty-seven thousand six hundred and seven square feet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Arthur Frank. I'm a lawyer with an address of two oh nine Bedford Street, Fall River, Massachusetts. And I represent a child and family services organization, a one hundred and seventy-seven year old nonprofit that provides social services to children in southeastern Massachusetts. This organization has been in Fall River for over twenty years and the types of services they provide here in Fall River consist of individual and family counseling in the community, including local schools, as well as counseling on-site. They have entered into a purchase and sales agreement with the owner whereby they would like to have their own building and the old Osborne School seems to be a very good fit for them. Let's talk for a minute about the Osborne School. It was constructed in eighteen ninety-three by the city of Fall River. It is a magnificent brick and granite structure that acted as a school until it was decommissioned in the summer of two thousand and eight, at the end of the school year. The city put it up on, for sale, and it wasn't until, I believe, twenty-twelve that they were able to sell the structure. And the current use now are offices. And what I was able to determine from the building inspector's office was that perhaps Mr. Bisco felt that because schools have offices in them, a, a continued use of offices in the school building would be, would be a, a continued pre-existing non-conforming use. What does CFS want to do? They want to put their clerical staff in there, their supervisors, and they want to have offices for all of their counselors. Now, some of the counselors just come in in the morning and then look at their files or prepare for their counseling, then go to the schools and they go to the children's homes to provide counseling. However, there are part of the staff that bring their clients into the building during the day, in the morning, from what I've been told by the individuals who operate CFS. And for the record, I believe they're on Zoom, that would be Ann Sempeo, the executive director, James Masur, who is the CFO, and also with them tonight is Greg Sarunian, who is the architect from MedCom Architectural Group. So they have a series, they would have a series of clients coming to the property. They would also have their, their staff, their clerical staff there. When I discussed this with Mr. Hathaway, I asked him, wouldn't you consider this also a, just another professional use, a non-conforming professional use? But he said, he felt that because the, there would be counseling there for these children, that he felt that would be an extension. That, that's why I'm here tonight, asking you for relief under eighty-six four twenty-four. As far as the structure, what they want to do.
Arthur, can I interrupt you for one second?
Go ahead.
I just have a question. Is what they do have to do with childcare?
No, it's counseling. It's psychiatric counseling.
Is it ancillary to children? My argument, my question is, does forty A, section three dealing, does that give you a way that says maybe zoning isn't applicable because it's for childcare?
I don't think it, I didn't think it falls under the.
Okay.
Childcare, because, because they're not, they're not.
No, no, I got it. I'm, I'm just asking the question because I know under the third paragraph, we talk about accessory or incidental purposes of operating a childcare facility and whether or not childcare shall mean a childcare center or school age children's care program. But that, none of that is happening.
This is all one-on, yeah, it's one-on-one counseling.
Okay.
It's one-on-one counseling or, or counseling with the families included.
No, you answered the question. It's not because I'm thinking you're saying it's going to be.
So when I had my discussion with Mr. Hathaway, he felt, no, this would be an increase in the non, in the pre-existing non-conforming use because you're going to bring these clients in there to meet with counselors. So that's why we're here tonight under eighty-six four twenty-four. As far as the building is concerned, what they want to do is, is put some dormers up in the attic. And they want to change that into conference rooms. Also, it'll have some restrooms. There's going to be an elevator. They want to modify the basement to an intake area for clients, a breaks area for staff, several conference rooms. There're going to be supervisor offices inside. The exterior modifications would be besides the dormers, they found that over the years, when the school department would need to make some repairs around the doorway areas, they use cinder blocks. And they feel that it would be better in keeping with the integrity of the building if they could make it look more like the building looked when it was opened in eighteen ninety-three. Use brick, use some, some type of material that's nicer than, than the cinder blocks. They also want to maintain enough parking spaces for if they ever hit a total peak where every counselor was there, every client was there. And they gave me some numbers. And they said that if, if, if the clinical staff of eighteen and the four supervisors and eighteen clients walked in in mid-afternoon, that would equal forty people. And if the IHT program people were there, that would be another two. If the TM program were there, there would possibly be four in mid-afternoon. If the adoption and adoption journeys people, that would add five. And the other ancillary programs they have could throw in another three. That could mean that.
Fifty-four.
It'd be fifty-four. Well, I looked at the, the literature when they were marketing this property, sale. And the marketing people said, oh, there's spaces for fifty-five plus cars. Well, we did a, there's a parking map that I submitted to Brittany earlier today. And if you look favorably on this petition and we get in front of Mr. Kenny's planning board review, we feel that a mixture of compact car parking spaces, spaces for SUVs, the handicap spots, obviously, we think we could put at least sixty spaces there. But that would be for another board and another conversation. But right now, we, we know we can deliver fifty-four spaces on that lot. We would definitely give you fifty-four spaces. We would actually want more. And if I could work with the planning review board, we think we could get sixty or maybe even more than sixty. Now, I know there was a.
You're not offering that.
Well, I think, I think that would have to be if, if I can get.
No, no, but I'm saying you can't. So what I'm saying.
Right now, would it be fifty-four?
Fifty-four.
I can, I can offer you fifty-four, but I, I'd, we'd like to make, get more than fifty-four.
No, I'd like you to have lots more, but, you know, pervious, impervious.
I know there was a, a woman that submitted a letter and I want to put to, to bed her feeling that we somehow hooked up with methadone clinics. We are not. We are family and child counselors. We are not involved with methadone clinics. We don't have any type of medical procedures. There used to be at times a psychiatrist that was available to, to speak on the case, with the caseworkers. But with the current telemed processing, that's not even happening. with the caseworkers, but with the current telemed processing, that's not even happening right now. There were no medications that would be distributed on site. So I, I hope if that woman is, is watching or listening, we are not involved with any type of methadone process. I also note that she was worried because in the past, kids shoot off fireworks in the parking lot, people were repairing cars in the back parking lot. That's not going to happen if CFS buys this property. They are going to maintain this property. They would put up adequate fencing and other screening devices. There's going to be shrubbery. If the board felt that they wanted some fences put up, we could make that a condition as well. If they deem that we, you need, we need to close off the entrance to the building at night, that's also possible too, whether a gate or sewers.
Hours of operation.
Anna, are you there? Can you, can you answer that question for the chairman?
I'm here. We have basic business hours of operation, Monday through Friday, eight to four, nine to five, somewhere around there.
All right. But so eight to five is, is a good hour of operations for you?
Correct.
I don't know whether it's terrific, I don't, but I don't want you coming back for an hour change this way or that way if the board grants it. Eight to five, Monday through Friday, nothing Saturday, nothing-
I'll defer to the, to the executive director.
I don't know whether she can hear. So Monday through Friday, eight to five would be adequate for you?
Correct.
Okay.
Attorney Frank, you said there, they do not prescribe or dispense medication, correct?
If, if, if there was a psychiatrist there, and right now there isn't, the psychiatrist could, could write a script, but it wouldn't be filled on-
Right, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, there's no, yeah.
No pharmacy.
Yeah, there's no pharmacy. And there's no, obviously, there's no other medical doctors involved in this. This is straight counseling. They offer an excellent service to the, to the children of Fall River. They go into the schools, they go into the houses, but some point-
But it's admitted, it's, it's offices. It's professional offices.
Correct.
That's what's going on in this.
That's exactly what it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, if you have any questions regarding the repairs, Mr. Sarunian, I think, is listening in, and he could explain his, his concept drawings.
What was your, why did you also reference Section 425?
Only because, again, when I spoke to Mr. Hathaway, he felt if you're going to put in dormers, then you're altering the structure.
I know, but Brooklyn takes care of that. That's, that's, boy.
I don't know.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, if the dormers are going up, that's considered a small scale.
Yeah.
Unless it's going to be like one of those dormers that went on, I believe it's Highland Avenue, it's a dormer to the extent that the length of the building.
No, I don't think it's, it's that, it's that, to that extent. And also because if they're going to change the, the entrances and try to repair them, I felt that could, could be deemed a reconstruction. That's why I call it a reconstruction.
No, I just, I was just trying to get my head around why you used that section. Okay. Hello?
Hello?
Yes, ma'am. Are you in favor or opposed to this petition, madam?
Um, I have concerns. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, okay. May, may I have your name, please?
My name's Hillary Madeira.
Hello, Helen Madeiras. You wrote us a letter, right? Or you sent us an email?
I did.
Thank you. So please, please, I'll let you speak.
So I do understand that Child and Family Services, they're needed. I work in the medical field. I see them employed all the time. This is a residential neighborhood. I'm worried about, you're saying about 50 people extra driving in, and I guess they will have parking made for them. However, you're talking about 50 people down these streets that are already very occupied, as well as, if you're saying 18 people coming and going, you're talking about a well over 100 possible clientele coming in, you know, and this is a residential neighborhood. How is that going to affect them viewing our properties? And, you know, possibly opening us up to being, you know, burglarized or anything above. I get, again, professional services, but I don't understand the need to be in a residential area. I get that the building is beautiful, and I get that is definitely a grabber for the institution, but I don't understand why it wouldn't be made to be in a more commercial zone or something that is better to leave the residents, you know, to their homes in regards to all the taxes that we pay and trying to maintain what we have as property owners.
Okay. Thank you.
We oppose as well.
Wait, 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 let me see. I, I heard what Ms.- Do you want to respond, Arthur, to that?
Yeah, let me see if I can clarify what I meant by expected peak parking needs in the building.
Can you hear him okay, Ms. Madeiras?
Can you hear me, Mrs. Madeiras?
I can, yes.
Okay, all right. In the clinic, if you had 18 staff, four administrators, and 18 clients had happened to be there, that could produce 40 people. However, many of these staff people are in schools, and they're not in the building, but I'm trying to give you a worst-case scenario. If, in the, in the IHT program, and Mrs. Sempeo can explain what some of these alphabets mean, you've got eight staff, including program manager and administrative assistant. Six are generally not in the building. In the TM program, 22 staff, most generally not in building mid-afternoon, down to four. And then the adoption, and adoption journeys, 15 staff, most generally not in building in mid-afternoon. So you, what you're going to have is a group of people coming in in the morning, and they're preparing for their cases. And then they're going, going out to the schools. And it, but you do, do have some clinicians that are going to be there because their clients are going to come to the building. And from what they, what I understand, the highest demand for people being there is going to be mid-afternoon. That being a middle-class neighborhood, I am going to infer that most people who live in that neighborhood are at their jobs or doing other things. So think back with-
Well, that's an assumption.
That, that's right. But this was also once a school, which meant that buses and cars lined up to pick up children every morning and every afternoon. This, there's going to be a general flow to the cars that come in and out of that place. I just want to make sure that we have enough parking spaces. If for some reason there was a perfect storm and 54 people were there, but that would be the total at, at, at peak time-
No, you gave, you gave peak numbers.
Yeah, correct.
Right, so when I'm referencing what he's saying in regards to possible peaks, we have to assume the worst. We can't always assume that everyone's going to be out of the building, 50 cars aren't going to be showing up. You have to take that all into planning for worst-case scenario until they decide to occupy all 50 to 60 spots. I mean, my land already takes on water as it is. So if you're paving more of their back lot, that, that's going to, you know, affect all my property as well.
We've already talked about there's going to be drainage, and that, that can be addressed at site plan review.
Did you hear that, madam? That if there is, if there is an issue of drainage, then site plan re, if, I, I don't know what the board's going to do, but if the board grants it, they will require site plan review, drainage will be an issue, and if the board grants, now that you're raising that, we will make it a specific condition that that be addressed for what the water runoff is and how they're going to deal with mitigating that issue. But I don't know what the board's going to do yet. We're still taking, we're still listening to the neighbors.
If I may for a minute-
Yeah, I'm going to let you, go ahead, Anna.
To address something else that, that Ms. Madeiras raised. All of our, most of our clients are children. We do not allow the children to come into the office without adult supervision. So there's no loitering that goes on outside of our buildings. And in this building, the access for clients will be on the side, so they won't be gathering in the front of the building anyway. We, we take great pride in our, in the buildings. We want to provide our clients with a very welcoming environment. They're coming to us because of trauma, because of emotional issues that they're dealing with, et cetera, et cetera. So we want to always make sure that the service that they're getting is heartfelt and, and designed for them. So I think that your concern about, you know, someone scoping out your property or, or causing damage is very unlikely with the clientele that we serve.
We, we oppose as well. I don't know if we have a chance to-
All right, one minute. Sir, can you identify yourself, please? I'd like to listen to you.
Yes, sir. My name is Rich Ferrer. I own the property on 103 Osborne.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sir, you were breaking up. I heard the Rich Ferrera, but beyond that, and I didn't get anything else.
In 2012, I actually, I went in front of the board concerning that sale. And I went in front of the board and said that I would like the real estate agency to be there just because of the fact that it would not affect the neighborhood. Not only the traffic, but also the safety of, of all the families around here, and also the ability to know that you are in a safe place to live. And the services, like the gentleman said, oh, it might be this many, it might be that many. And he's asking for 60, 60 more, like, ability to have 60 eventually. These things start to creep up and it grows, and it becomes more and more. They add a little peaks, and then they want more and more, and then eventually you could have influx of who knows what. God forbid, I know everybody has issues and they need to address them, but this is a residential area. There are plenty of properties in the city for sale in commercial areas that they can do their services in main roads. They spoke about, in the application, they say that this would not affect anything in the neighborhood, and this will. This will change everything. I have a surveillance camera outside my home, and I have actually pointing to that building. That building has almost no one there at any time. There are usually maybe two or three people at tops. It's not, neighborhood is quiet, people walk their dogs, and the, when people say they need services, you have to understand that they have issues, and I get they need the help, but we need to make sure we're safe as well.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ferrera. Arthur, is the building being used now for offices?
There's, there were real estate offices in there.
Okay. So Mr. Ferrera or Mrs. Madeiras, I mean, if you can hear me, was there, there was some activity going on in that building for some offices there?
Monday through, correct. Monday through Friday, between the hours of, say, eight and 5:00 p.m., there's maybe four to five vehicles parked at any given time with nobody really exiting or entering. It's a, it's a kind of just those individuals. There also is a church that gathers there on the weekends, so, and they've never expanded beyond having to use just what is utilized in the back lot as well. They've made, you know, use of the property and parking lot as seen, you know, to the capabilities. So again, I just am concerned with an influx of, again, and I know this is all hypothetical, but an influx of potentially 50 vehicles.
But Monday, we've got the Monday through Friday, we've got that, right? We, it's no weekends at this, at location.
Um, well, the, the, no, you're correct. You're talking about for the proposal, for the child and family-
No, no, I, yeah, for the, I just want to make sure that the weekend part of it is not, there's no activity on the weekend. I want to make sure that you understand that.
No, and I understand that, but what, what is also being said is Monday through Friday, when most of the homeowners are going to be not impacted because they're at work, means that all our properties are going to be, you know, again, we're not going to be there. So now we're, you know, exposing ourselves to all 50-plus people, 18 clientele, Monday through Friday. If you're talking five days a week, you're talking up to, you know, 80 to 100 people, vehicles of all potential people with, like, again, like Mr. Ferrer said, people who need help, and we understand that, and we, our heart goes out to them. However, they need help for a reason, and you're bringing that type of clientele into a residential area. I, I don't feel like my children in the backyard and stuff like that, I mean, I don't know these people's problems, and like I said, I wish them well, and I hope, have, hope they get the help that they need. However, to do it in my backyard is concerning.
I got, thank you.
Can I add something to that, Mr.?
Well, I'm going to let Attorney Frank respond. Go ahead.
As, as Mr. Dupere and I were talking earlier, and besides being an elementary school, that at one point was also used for children with disabilities. So there's a history of counseling and teaching children with disabilities in that building. Maybe not now, maybe it ended, maybe it ended in 2008, but there's a history, there's a history of caring for people like that in that neighborhood.
I got that. Mr. Ferrera?
No, you're talking about people with disabilities. You're not talking about people that have mental issues. That's our concern. We have children, I have children myself, and I do, I feel bad for these children, but at the same time, it needs to be done elsewhere because I don't want to put my child's life at jeopardy either. I mean, we live right across the street from the school.
Well, maybe, maybe I'm not understanding. So let me ask you this question, Ann, or maybe Attorney Frank.
Dick Ann, Ann can answer.
My, my understanding is, I have professional counselors that have offices. The individuals come in accompanied by a parent or a guardian or some adult. They see the counselor, they pack up and they leave.
Correct.
Mr. Assad?
I mean, it's not like, it's not a daycare, people aren't there.
Correct. I, I also have to explain that, that what we've experienced in the last six months has impacted our business in the way that we have utilized telehealth 100% from last March until mid-July.
Oh, my God.
So we have developed skills where, where most of our staff are able to work from home, and if clients are in agreement that they would like their services to be through telehealth, then we are able to do that with them. So we are giving you numbers right now that were pre-COVID numbers. I know that our staff has come to appreciate the privilege of working from home, and that many clients, especially if they have two or three kids at home, are going to take advantage of not having to pack them all up, get them in the car, drive them to Child and Family Services. You know what I mean? So, so we are presenting at the peak and at the most.
No, that's what I want. I want the 60, I want the 54 number as being the max number.
Yeah.
But it's, I've got people in cubicles. I've got people in offices doing what they're doing and cycling people in.
You've got people coming in in the morning, and then they're leaving to go to the schools.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's not, that, that it's not a daycare, that kids aren't there, that-
Correct.
They're in, they're out, they see the therapist for an hour or 55 minutes and they're gone.
That's correct.
Seventy-five percent of our clients are seen in the community, either in the homes, at schools, in community settings. That's what we do.
No, no, that, I, I got that. I just wanted to be clear that everyone, the, the scenario being they're not using, the, the schoolyard isn't being used as a holding pen. The kids aren't playing, they're in, they're out, they're within the building, they're escorted. But let's, let's see what the board or if anybody else has anything to say. I certainly appreciate the comments from the people that live in the neighborhood and near the building. But-
Right, I just, can I just add one thing?
Yeah, I'm going to let the neighbor speak. Go ahead. So Ms. Madeiras?
I just, so I just understand everyone keeps reflecting to past uses. However, oh, you have to talk about what we're dealing with now and in the year 2020 and how this neighborhood's already progressed since I've lived here in the last 13 years. We're much more occupied already. So again, I mean, buses came in and out. Like, okay, I understand that, but now you're talking about, you know, vehicles in and out all day long. You're saying people come into office, they leave, they come back, they're, you know, you're talking about clientele coming in, and I get that you're saying the loitering isn't a problem. I mean, like I said, just the influx of people down this street that's already parked fully on one side of the road. Sometimes you have to back down a side street in order to let, you know, you know, buses come and go. I mean, this isn't, this isn't just, I just can't imagine an extra influx of-
No, I understand, but in the middle of your neighborhood, you've got this building. And I was going to ask Mr. Ferrera this question. He said he was at probably a city council meeting when they were planning or the real estate committee was getting to sell. My, in preparation for this evening's, I looked at the deed. I didn't see any restrictions in that deed for use. Is there something that I'm missing or you know about that?
So the, the, the use was supposed to be just office. And we agreed to that. But what they're, these folks are applying for-
Was supposed to be, I'm sorry, sir.
He said offices.
Offices, okay.
Offices, offices. And now this is office counseling. The reason why they're in front of the board is because it's not allowed in this, this residential area. That's why they-
That's true. That's exactly why they're before the board because the building inspector, who's the zoning enforcement officer, listened to what they want to do and said, I won't give you I won't give you the use occupant, the use, the occupancy for that use unless you come before the board and the board grants it. Yet you're absolutely correct on that, sir.
Right. So, when I went up in front of the council, I, out of the three options that were available, I felt that for the, not only for the traffic that was important, but the safety of the neighborhood, I wanted the services to be something that would not establish an issue. When we speak, when people speak about loitering, they, they'll leave the property, but after they leave the property, you have no idea where they're going, who they're with. Some of these parents that are guiding their children for counseling have issues themselves. I have a constant issue fighting less, all crime that comes by our neighborhood. That's why I put surveillance cameras up around my home because of issues that we've had in the past and have been addressed with the police officers.
Okay.
Just think about you folks living across the street from a possible situation where there are people that could have mental issues that are literally crossing the front of your property every day and decide to do whatever they want to for some reason, if they're angry after their session. And they come by my home is not acceptable. I don't think anybody in the board would accept that in front of their home. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Ferreira. And anything else? I see whoever that has lit up. No, I, I don't know, whoever. Sir with the blue shirt, red background, I thought you got lit up that you wanted to speak, no? Okay. All right, so members of the board, this is what we've got. We've got this petition, it's a special permit. Bill, is there anything you want to add before I start?
I'm almost speechless.
Okay, that's good.
But I will say one thing about the parking. It just makes you think of when you build a shopping center, you plan it for the week before Christmas for parking. And he's planning this for the worst possible day. I don't think you have to go that far, frankly. And it also, don't box yourself in so much that you can't deal with impervious versus pervious soil if you're going to make.
No, but you, but you'll deal with all that issue if the board grants it at site plan review.
Well, if you, if you, if you make him promise six more spaces, then it would box.
I'm not making, he said, the reason why I asked the question is I wanted to make sure I had numbers that he was comfortable. I don't want him to stretch and say, I can't get you that. He says he can do fifty-four, we got fifty-four.
I just want to make sure he's not boxing himself into a situation.
They say Monday through Friday, eight to five, that works. In terms of the model, what's before the board, whether the board says, yeah, thank you, Bill. So, under eighty-six, four, twenty-four, non-conforming use of land. The board, I'll read it again, the Board of Appeals may grant a special permit to change or extend a non-conforming use in accordance with this section only if it determines that such change or extension shall not be substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. And the following types of changes to non-conformity, non-conforming uses may be considered by the Zoning Board of Appeals. A, change or substantial extension of the use. B, change from one non-conforming use to another, equally appropriate or more appropriate non-conforming use. So, we hear that there's offices in there now. Now, we're going to expand it into professional offices with some, with, with some activity or counseling taking place on the premises. So, motion to have a determination that it's not substantially more detrimental or a motion that it is substantially more detrimental. If it's more substantially detrimental, it's over. So, members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, just a question. When we're talking about previous non-conforming use, how far back do we go? Do we look at as when it was a school or what it currently is?
Current, the current use because the use there is now under a special permit. I think the history of it is what was there. But I think the changes from what it is now to where it's going.
Thank you.
So. And I guess the other part would have to be on the reconstruction so we get rid of the cinder blocks and put other materials that are more appropriate and compliant or.
And the dormers, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the dormers, if you want, we can address it. But I really think Borkland says you can put the dormers up. Good luck, it's a small scale. But, so what do you want to do, members of the board? Carolyn, Dan, John? If you think that what we're hearing, that it's substantially more detrimental, then let's like a motion that it's substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. If we think that it's not, then it's not substantially more detrimental, let them do it. And then we can put some conditions, Monday through Friday, fifty-four parking spaces. And if not, Attorney Frank can deal what he has to do with.
I make a motion that we find it is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood.
All right, so Carolyn, that it's not substantially more detrimental so it meets the eighty-six, four, twenty-four standard for a grant. Do we have a second on Carolyn's motion?
I'll second.
Second, Dan Dupere, any discussion on the motion? Okay, all those in favor that the board finds that this extension shall, is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood? Okay, so we got Dan Dupere, no other discussion. Dan, let's vote. Jim Carkins?
Yes.
Yes. John Frank?
No.
No. Dan Dupere, yes. Carolyn Morris said, yes.
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes. So, the vote is four to one. John Frank is the, no. That petition is granted. Were there any conditions? Monday through Friday, Monday through Friday, eight to five?
Correct.
Fifty-four parking spaces?
Yes.
Site plan review?
Correct.
Okay, so that modified motion, same thing, John, no? No, you're opposed to the whole thing.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, could I just say that on the parking again, can we get some flexibility for the site plan review process? If we find that fifty-four is a little bit heavy on impervious cover, we might modify that a little. I'm just, just a little concerned.
To what, it's fifty-four is existing? I guess I'm missing you, I guess.
But, yeah, what, what, what the originally, the marketing plan said was you can already put fifty-five plus cars on. But if you look at the current conditions on the ground, there's no striping, there's no aisles. What they want to do is make it look nice with turning, the twenty-two-foot wide turning aisles with parking spaces of various size, compact cars, SUVs, the handicap spots, obviously, which are by law. So that we would save that argument or that discussion, that conversation with site plan review. And if we could put more on, and also, but balance.
It was minimum, it was a minimum of fifty-four.
But balance it, balance it with the drainage issues. But we're, we're comfortable that we can put fifty-four cars on knowing that that would be the, you know, the hundred-year storm of cars of parking.
But you're shaking your head, but like we're missing some things.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just thinking that you're doing the mall before Christmas and you don't have to do that.
No, no. I think the board just said, because Arthur said fifty-four, minimum of fifty-four street parking spaces. If he can get a hundred out of there.
Yeah, you're locking him into a minimum, is what I'm saying. That may be too large a minimum to deal adequately with runoff issues. That's all I'm suggesting.
If I have to, I'll come back before the board.
I mean, it's just going to be up to guys like Paul Furlan and Byron Holmes as to runoff issues now.
Well, that's going to be, you're going to address that in site plan review.
Right, right, that's part of the site plan team that looks at it.
The runoff issues, okay.
So, if we, if we find that, that we can't deal with it adequately, then, then.
You come back before the board.
I'll come back before the board.
Yeah.
But I, I think, I think the, our engineers can be creative enough to balance the drainage issues with, with the parking issues.
Yeah.
Okay. So, agenda item number eleven was granted with those conditions.
Fifty-four minimum, right?
Yeah.
Yes. And the hours of operation, Monday through Friday, eight to five.
And site plan review.
And site plan review. And that was it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, let's see, that was agenda item number eleven. So, this is going to be agenda item number twelve. Want to, want to take a break?
Please.
Can we, we'll have a five-minute break, please. Thank you. Agenda item number twelve, Richard Leveque, here of Mark Levin Esq., one forty-four Fenner Street, Lot G fifteen six. This is a variance request to subdivide the parcel into two lots, leaving an existing two-family dwelling on one lot, size six thousand five hundred square feet, plus or minus, and constructing a new single family on the new lot, size seven thousand one hundred twenty-five, plus or minus, square feet, waiving requirements in the A two district.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Director, Madam Clerk, Attorney Mark L. Levin, one three eight Rock Street, four of Massachusetts. I'm here representing Richard Leveque tonight. Mr. Leveque is a third-generation owner of this property. His grandparents had built it, had brought it back when, then his parents, and then he inherited it more rather recently. The property actually consists of two separate non-conforming lots and up until two thousand and nine were taxed separately. It was actually in two thousand and nine that the city of Fall River merged them for tax purposes. But there were two separate lots from two separate chains of title. The house that was built on Assessor's Lot, G fifteen sixteen, that's presently there, was the house lot that was purchased in nineteen sixty-eight. The common owner at that point, my client's grandparents, bought the lot at the corner of Dwelly and Fenner Street a couple of years later. These lots were independent. We don't know what their thought was at the time. But as you can see by the plan, the only use of the property is the house in the parking area and the garage that is on the original lot, G fifteen sixteen. So, subsequently, there was not any use of the remaining land. These two non-conforming lots then were merged by the fact that they became non-conforming based on zoning. And my client now is looking to subdivide the same to the original lot sizes that were there before and to construct new single-family home. We believe that the area, if you look at the plan, is mostly with multifamily homes, including the large multifamily property just to the north of that, which is on a smaller lot than either of the two lots that we're proposing to create. The neighborhood is such that the house is, and the houses are on lots that are consistent to the house lots that are in that neighborhood. Further, the property itself, with this house being so far off to one side, and it was designed only to be one lot at the time, doesn't have any utilization of the other property. Now, I believe you have a petition of people that were interested in allowing this to happen with you that we submitted. And also today I was received, I received from Madam Clerk, the one neighbor who is in opposition, actually someone I do know and I obviously would not have known that before, he sent this. But he was disturbed about his view. First, if you see the house on Lot fifteen, it's directly in front of one of his homes. And my client sent me these pictures. These are the pictures that, I feel like I'm my cousin Vinny now. The pictures of what this gentleman sees from his windows with these tall green things called trees that are huge that cover the backside of, in the front of where the other house is, where the house behind it would be. Sure. So, those are on my client's boundary line. And that's the neighbor next door who says that he, by having a house there, it'll interfere with his view of the pond. And that actually is in front of the other house. And this one is the front of the driveway. And then my client sent me pictures of across the street from him, directly showing other large trees that would pose to me that it would be very difficult for him to see any of the pond through the house and through the other houses on the other side of the street. You know, and I'm not trying to be silly about it, but I think that his concern is, is more that he doesn't want it more than it's going to interfere with him. And his feeling that it's going to change his value is very speculative. We usually find that houses with a conforming neighborhood and you put other houses in that area do sell. And they sell today at a much higher value than they would otherwise because of the affordability of land today. So, our position is that we want to go back to what the original owners had had, which was two separate lots. They would have been buildable until zoning had changed and to permit the extra use. There would be off-street parking, as you see, two cars right on Fenner Street. They try to meet pretty much the zoning requirements for the setbacks and sidelines of the property. I think it's only on Dwelly Street, they're like two and a half feet different. And on, and on the sideline of the Butter's property or my client's other house, it's two and a half feet different than would be for the regular zoning. Thank you.
Mark?
Yes.
You've sat here all night very, very patiently. You listened to Dan and I talk about eighty-six dash thirty-four subsection C.
Yes.
And that no yard or lot extending, existing on the effective date of the ordinance from which this chapter is derived shall be reduced in dimension or area below the minimum requirement set forth in the chapter. The yards or other lots created after such effective date shall meet at least the minimum requirements established by this chapter. So, Mike, looking at what you've got, what your client has, they have a conforming lot in the A two district. They have sufficient square footage, it's a two-family that's allowed there.
Yes.
And now we're, you've got forty-eight, section six, that merged the two lots together. So, you have a conforming lot.
But I think the state statute actually gives you that liberty to allow a variance to purposely make changes to what is conforming.
What, what, where, give me that, forty-eight, no, forty-eight, not forty-eight, section six?
I'm not sure what section, sorry.
No, I got it. I'm just asking the question because I, I was trying to get my head around this today along all of the lots.
I absolutely understand.
That I had the confirm, that I had, we have conforming lots. And obviously, let's split them, the argument of the assessors, it was before, but they merged together.
But this is actually traditionally what split lots have been for years. I mean, we've always done this same scenario where we have non-conforming lots or conforming lots and we split them down.
Yeah. I, I got it, I understand, but I mean, I think.
I'm not saying that is.
And it's not precedent-setting and I'm not sure what, what happened before.
Right.
But I, and I guess as I spend my weekends reading zoning instead of doing chores around the house, shame on me. Eighty, eighty-six, thirty-four C is the one that keeps hitting me between the eye of making conforming lots.
But I think that's where you have the statutory right as a zoning board, a board to entertain variances which are for the purposes of varying.
Varying.
What the zoning.
Shape, topography, soil conditions. And the hardship has to be associated with the land.
Right. I have a building that's offset, it's designed for that.
But it conforms to, but it's, but it's in the A two district.
I understand that.
I got it, I know, I know you do.
I do understand.
I know you do, I'm trying to ask, I'm trying to get you that, help me get my head around, how do I get around?
Now, I think that you have.
The roadblock that I'm having with all these petitions.
I think the board has the opportunity to vary what the dimensional requirements are. And as long as there is some show of a need and where there had been two lots here and there has been, there is a house that does not utilize that property. It was built on one lot and subsequently the people purchased another lot. And had they not been the same owners, then that lot still would have been viable to build up.
I'm just debating on whether or not to resign from the board and take on the action of, no, no, listen to me. And, and ask, go and try to be a lobbyist to change forty-eight, section six, to get rid of urgency. Because it's, it's a problem, especially in a city like Fall River where we have lots of these small lots.
Right, and Fall River has done other things and not the current bylaw, but one of the older bylaws where they tried to separate it so that, actually, it's almost like the next petition I have, where lots don't have contiguous frontage, they only meet at a point that doesn't mean anything for value. And that was one thing that was passed at one point.
Now, save that for the next one.
Yes.
All right.
But I think, I think what you got here is, I mean, again, my client's asking us something. He says, you know, there had been two separate lots and.
Absolutely. Your client has the right to come before the board and ask.
And this, no, but this neighborhood is such that the character of the neighborhood, the lot sizes of that neighborhood are such that these lots, even after they're divided, are still gonna be bigger than most of the lots in that neighborhood.
I know. When we were doing the, it doesn't matter, I mean, I hear the history, but at the, the master plan, Arthur Diazantis and I were trying to put that in as part of the zoning that we could look and say, what's in the, what's in the neighborhood, what's in the area, and use that as a basis to grant the variance.
You have case law on that with statutory changes of the neighborhood. They look at a character of a neighborhood to say that. And that's many a case of the zoning case laws that go into the Supreme Court, so you have the right to look at the character of the neighborhood, to see how that neighborhood has not changed to meet the zoning, that the zoning requirements that did change were not really applicable to this neighborhood because you have one lot.
You've got one lot in the neighborhood.
In the entire neighborhood.
Correct.
And everyone else has a smaller lot, and with bigger structures on them, or more dense structures than a few. So here, you do have a character of neighborhood that's pretty well established with this size spot, and you have this particular building off to the side that underutilizes the rest of the land. Just really, just, you see the large trees that are there, and that's all there are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Members of the board, any questions? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition?
There is a member of opposition.
Pardon me? Oh, I got letters. Let me, yes, thank you. Very good.
Yeah, letters of support.
I got support, yeah. We got support and.
The one letter I addressed, yes.
So this, yeah, you got the petition. We have a petition, the undersigned hereby state that they are in favor of the variance application applied for by Richard Leveque to divide the premises at 144 Fenner Street. And we've got lots of Fenner Street residents that have signed it. We've got one, two, then we've got this one, Maderas, we talked about Mr. Maderas, who is complaining about the view. And I think that was the only two that I've got written, right? That's it. So those were the two letters, some in support from neighbors and Mr. Jeff Maderas, who was opposed to it. So what do you think, Members of the Board? Do we have a motion to grant, motion to deny? Did he meet the standard? Did he meet the burden to do it? It's a variance petition, shape, topography, soil condition, hardship.
I'd make a motion to deny under eighty-six thirty-four C, just to be consistent with our ruling earlier.
Motion to deny, Carolyn Marasette.
To be consistent, excuse me.
To be consistent, I got it.
I'll second.
Second, Dan Dupere, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? John Frank, yes. Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
Yes. Dan Dupere, yes. Carolyn Marasette, yes. Chairman aside, yes. So that petition is denied.
Thank you.
Again, on eighty-six thirty-four grounds, so if you wanna, if you wanna make law.
Big guy will make some law on that.
Huh?
I think there's some law on that.
No, no, let's, get it, let's, let's deal with it. I'd rather have it clear than.
Otherwise, you're limiting even coming before the board for ninety percent of everything that comes here.
So agenda item number thirteen is Jeffrey Doxy, care of Mark Love and Esquire, 379 Mount Hope Avenue, Lot A928, variance request to divide the existing parcel into three lots, leaving an existing single-family dwelling on 369, lot size 6,120 plus or minus square feet, and creating lot size 4,050 plus or minus square feet on Woodward Street, lot size to be conveyed to an abutte, and creating lot size 2,025 plus or minus square feet on Clarkson Street to be conveyed to an abutte, waiving requirements in the R8 district.
Again, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Planner and Clerk, Attorney Mark L. Levin, representing Jeffrey Doxy, 138 Rock Street, 4th of Massachusetts. You see by the plan, I have the most odd topographical-shaped lot that you have around Fall River. It is a T. In fact, the Ds, if you look at the D, were acquired by two separate parcels. The house lot at 379 Mount Hope ended where the line comes across parcel two and three, and parcel two, three, and that portion of lot was a separate parcel land acquired by a prior successor owner. As you can see by the plan, the, my client acquired this more recently, and you will see the fence in the shed that was there when he purchased the property, and from what I understand, has been there for many years by the original owner of 379 Mount Hope Avenue, who purchased both parcels. And their only use of that property is within that parcel one, where the wired fences are. The two other pieces are not contiguous. They are fronting on two separate streets, so you have three separate frontages for this parcel of land. What the neighbors, because my client doesn't use them, so after my client purchased the property, the neighbors, two of the neighbors approached and said, gee, we'd like to buy some of that land from you. We could put a garage up there, we could put some more lawn, and put some more parking. So we're here before you, saying that we're looking at an extremely odd-shaped lot that parcels on parcel one and two, fronting on two separate streets, have no value to my client or have any use, or has had any use. But you have a Butters who have, well, one of them that's gonna acquire, has a smaller size lot, and would like to expand their lot and put a garage on. And the other neighbor just wants to have the extra thing, because he's got a pool and other things on his property, just wants to expand his yard and fence that area in. We are looking at an area that has more rectangular-sized lots. It's probably the only shape in that whole area that has this. Where the house sits is out to the front on Mount Hope Street, so the value of any use of that land and what can be done to make other, one lot more conforming and another lot to give more parking to neighbors who would like to desire to have that in the area is a benefit to the neighborhood. And I believe that this would be a, something that would give a hominy to that neighborhood and be of more supporting of the statutory requirements and the bylaws to have something that is not detrimental to the neighborhood, but to provide for amenities that other homeowners do not have. Again, we have a tribal problem. We have a petition that was circulated by, actually, neighbors who want the property that's submitted with you, and that's my presentation.
Just, I have a question for you.
Sure.
What if those, what if the neighbors change their mind and don't want to purchase parcel two and parcel three? I mean, they're much too small to build an actual house on.
Right, they aren't. They're only gonna be added for, one wants it for a garage, and the other one just wants it for more land.
So if you're, if you're thinking of granting, then you limit it and say, no further, no building, no, just.
Well, someone wants to build a garage.
Unless it gets merged, no, no.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
That's why I was gonna ask, who it gets, who it's going to get attached to, to make sure it becomes part of their property.
Yes.
And that way, we, we just don't have these lots that are now non-conforming.
That's correct.
Do, do, I don't know how, do you know the history of how parcels two and three came about as part of the pond?
Well, yes. The, the lot, like I said.
Because they don't have contiguous frontage to say that they merged.
No. The, I'm gonna be drawing. This was the original lot.
Yeah.
That 379 was built on.
Correct.
And this had been in the chain of title for a long time separately. It was about fifteen years ago, just happened that this piece, it was fifteen, or maybe, actually, it's twenty years ago, this piece here was a separate piece that was owned by people, never built on, and they sold it to the people at 379. So the, the lot actually has.
Yeah, that was my recollection, that it went Clarkson to Woodward Street, one lot going back and forth.
That's right. This one just went up to that point. So we're dividing it now so that parcel one gets a little more land that it uses, and parcel three and two be conveyed to the neighbors. They've already, they're lawyers.
Because it's not, it's not, I mean, yeah, it's not the traditional merger on frontage.
No. It's three separate frontages. It's a very odd lot, and it's kinda surprising even for a river that they have something like this.
So do we know for certain that parcel two's going to the Nuno, to Natalie and Nuno Cavalo, and parcel three's going to the chief of?
Yeah. Jeff?
Yeah, so, hi, everybody. So actually, parcel three is going to the Borges's.
Oh, Borges, sorry.
Oh, that's, they're going to the north, okay.
Yeah, and the reason for this is, when, if I could just have a second, when we spoke to the neighbors on this, we feel strongly that this will keep, you know, someone down the line who buys 379 from just slapping a bunch of junk, or whatever it is, right in the neighborhood's backyard. I know at one point, when speaking with Antonio Borges, that there was boats, there was a bunch of other stuff there, you know, right in between Borges's and Pacheco's lot. So what we're trying to do is ensure that the integrity of the neighborhood stays, in that, you know, the Cavalos and the Pachicos, they can all, you know, whether it's a year from now or fifty years from now, enjoy their backyard. Because as you see, they have a small lot, and those parcels go right up, right up to theirs. So we're just trying to make sure we keep everyone, you know, in, in having a nice little block.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I understand. All right, let me see, is anybody else in favor of this petition? Is there anyone opposed to this petition? Anne Marie, I can't see you, but that's okay. Members of the Board, any questions?
Yeah, petition there too. I think you mentioned it, yeah.
No, that you've got a petition in favor, signed by lots of people on Mount Hope Avenue.
Woodward and Clarkson.
In favor. I don't think it was, hold, it's a petition of opposition, I'm sorry.
No?
No, oh, one, hundred, no, sorry.
No, that's the next one.
What is the guarantee of conveyance of these to the people? There isn't, I mean.
Well, they have a contract, and either that or it's not gonna be sold, it would just stay with him.
Sorry to interrupt you guys, but we actually have purchasing sales already drawn up with the stipulation. You know, obviously, if you guys don't approve it, the deal falls apart. If you guys do approve it, we move forward, so we do have a contract already written. So that parcel two goes to Antonio Borges. Exactly how you see on the plans, it's already written up in the purchasing sales.
Okay, thank you. Okay. But if we do grant, then parcel three and parcel two should be, no, they have to be, they can't stand, they can't stand alone.
That's right.
They can't stand alone, they have to get merged with one, some of the lot. Can we say that?
Yes.
Yes, I think we can. Because the presentation is parcel three is going to parcel A935, and parcel two is going to.
Who's getting to?
A939.
Yeah.
So Borges is buying both.
So Mr. Borges is buying both of them.
Yes, and you, what he wants to do is attach parcel three to A935 and parcel two to A939.
Right.
Yes, no, that's, that's the logical, okay. So Borges is buying both of them, so you can make that, the condition would be parcel three goes to A935 and parcel two goes to A939. No further subdivision or anything else you wanna put onto it, if you think that's where you wanna go. Or if you think that it's a, inconsistent with the original eighty-six thirty-four C, then you deny it. Anything else, Members of the Board? Motion to grant with conditions, motion to deny. Bill, anything you wanna add to it?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the petition subject to execution of the purchase and sales as stated in the proposal.
Okay. Parcel three goes to A935, parcel two to A939, and the variance would be granted. There's not, I don't think there's any other conditions that need to be on there. Is that your motion, Jim?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, John Frank, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Jim Cawkins?
Yes.
John Frank?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Carolyn Marasette?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes. Petition's granted.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Agenda item number oh-one, Bristol County Homes, Inc., care of Mark Love and Esquire, 22 Sprague Street, Lot H880, N90. It's an amended petition, variance request to subdivide the existing parcel into two lots, leaving existing single-family on lot size 7,691 plus or minus square feet, and constructing a new single-family on the vacant lot, 5,000 plus or minus square feet, providing a six-foot easement between the newly created lots, waiving requirements in the R4 district. In the R4 district, it's a two-family district.
That is correct. Again, Mr.
Go ahead, more to us.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Mr. Director, Madam Clerk, Attorney Mark Levin, again for the record, I'm representing Bristol County Homes, Inc. They purchased this property in the past year after a foreclosure sale on the property. They acquired it, actually, not knowing what they'd do at the time, because they just bid it on the fee, and they were successful. But as you can see, this is a particularly odd-shaped parcel of land. It has a house that is in a location that would prevent the actual division of the lot in any other conforming type of manner, because it's an odd-shaped lot. And being in R4, they originally, before they thought about doing this, and I'll tell you why, they were just gonna add on the second dwelling onto the property. In fact, they went through site plan review, got a building permit to add the second dwelling onto the, this one structure as it was permitted under the bylaws. It was actually a neighbor who actually started the opposition that suggested to my client that he create a separate house lot out of it and build a house, and in fact, had contacted me to ask for an easement so that she could have access to her property over my client's property, and we don't know why that changed, but somehow she got the neighborhood to get upset about this being divided and having a second use, with the neighbors believing that it can't be done because the zoning doesn't allow you to have a two-family on this lot, which it does. The whole purpose was to create a separate lot to make it more amenable to that neighborhood, and actually, probably visually, a lot better by separating them on their own lots. Density is gonna be the same, they would have parking over on their own lots, but now, you know, if we combine it, then all the parking's gonna shift onto one corner of the property, and that would probably be even more of a problem, since I understand if the dwelling was attached to it, it would affect the neighbor, because the windows that she said she sees is actually, would be in between the two houses, where if the houses are separate, this is the side of the wall that she sees where she says there were windows, and that she would be blocked if the house was put there instead of going further attached to the property. So again, to my cousin Vinny, there are no windows there where this house would be put there. Yes, the deck that comes off there would be a little closer to the zoning requirements than it would be, but that could be moved, that's not a thing. We can meet the, the sideline requirement if we just shift that forward if we had to. This just made it a nice placement for it to have the house set up on its own separate lot. If you look at the neighborhood, they're all single-family homes, although it's a, a two-family district. And that's why when this was approached to my client after he already got the building permit to build the second unit, to make it a two-family. got the building permit to build the second unit to make it a two-family, he thought, okay, this will be more consistent with this neighborhood, it'd be more harmonious to what they have out there and the lot sizes for both lots would still be larger than most of the lots in that neighborhood. So the, the, the thought of coming here was to make it more palatable for the neighbors by having two separate houses than one big duplex. But that's where we are, we think that the, the, the lot size is certainly a problem. I can't do much, I can't rob anymore. We, our petition was originally not to have that six-foot easement, to have a small lot. After they talked to the neighbor, the abutter, they made it larger because that's what the neighbor wanted, but she no longer wants that now. So I'm here asking you still to go forward this because my client now is at the point where he's spent some time and thought that this was a better proposition for this neighborhood and would have better value for the entire neighborhood, including these properties being separated than having a duplex. I mean, the density's going to be the same either way, it's either you're going to see a big two-family or you're going to have two single-family houses that are consistent with all the other houses in that whole neighborhood that are out there.
But I create this ugly lot, forty-foot frontage on it, where before you've got one that has, you have the proper frontage, proper square footage.
I understand.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just, I'm, I'm, you know, we, we're compounding, making these non-conforming and frontage is one of the big issues that I guess.
But you would have.
Yes, I know.
You would have a duplex there otherwise.
I know this, I know this.
And you have the permit, this is part of my package.
And the duplex, and the duplex is conforming.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And we have it, I gave you the permit as part of your package, so, you know, you know what he started, it was actually after the neighbors.
No, no, I, I understand.
And approached and changed it.
There we go, here we go, let's try doing this, I got it.
So you're damned if you do, you're DM'd if you don't sometimes. But I think the neighbors, some of the neighbors don't think he could build this, you know, a duplex, they think.
No, I think he can do it as a matter of right.
No, I know, but a lot of neighbors think, from what I read the letters, the opposition, they think, well, this will be the end of it, they won't going to have anything done.
So let me see, no, I, okay, so they need an education, maybe they're paying attention. So, any board members, any questions before, no? Petition, there, there's a petition in opposition, I think we all, I don't know if we all had it in our package, but there's, this petition, we're the undersigned neighbors, oppose and propose variance for the subdivision of the existing lot at twenty-two Sprague Street. And there are Sprague Street neighbors that have signed off on it, I'm trying to see if I can read the name, somebody, I think by the name Allen at five Sprague Street, Perry Borges, fifteen, Laura Ryan, twenty-five Sprague Street, Natalie Lutu at fifty Bay Street, uh, I live at four, who's this guy? This is Natalie, so Natalie signed and she also sent in a letter, uh, so she's opposed to it. There is a, dear board members, who's this sign? Nat, Nat, same group, Natalie Theodore, uh, response, so your client sent in a response, but you're, you did an adequate job of trying to rebut everything. Okay, so that's what we've got. Is there anyone here that I missed in favor or anyone opposed to this petition other than what I've read? All right, members of the board, what do you want to do? Motion to grant with conditions, motion to deny, did they meet the standard for a variance or not?
Make a motion to deny.
Motion to deny, Attorney Carolyn Marasette, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, John Frank, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Jim Corkin?
Denied.
Denied. John Frank?
Denied.
Dan Dupere?
Denied.
Carolyn, yes? Chairman aside, yes, this petition is denied. Thank you, Attorney.
Well, thank you for your time, there'll be a duplex there instead. What he originally started to do, he was trying to make the neighbors happy.
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Any citizen input? Hearing none, let's move on to the approval of the minutes. We have minutes of the June, this is true, we have minutes of the June twenty-second, June twenty-fifth, and June thirtieth.
Just the June twenty-second.
June twenty-second meeting are the only minutes that we have and I apologize for keeping people here for a minute, but Brittany got me a little excited today because we were worried about not having all the minutes approved. So I went, so under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-two, Subsection C, which deals with the open meeting law and minutes of the meeting, uh, minutes of all open meeting sessions shall be created and approved in a timely manner, the minutes of an open session, if they exist, and whether approved or in draft form, shall be made available upon request by any person within ten days. Brittany advises me that she does in fact have draft minutes of the minutes for.
June twenty-seventh, June twenty-fifth, June thirtieth, July sixteenth.
But they're not done and part of that has to do with the city of Fall River's scheduling of her time and so for that reason, um, the frequently asked questions, it says, uh, public bodies must create and approve minutes of all meetings, including executive sessions in a timely manner. A timely manner will generally be considered to be within the next three public body meetings or within thirty days, whichever is later, unless the public body can show good cause for further delay. So COVID nineteen enters into that equation. The Attorney General encourages public bodies to approve minutes at the next meeting wherever possible. The open meeting law does not govern the method for approving those minutes, however, public bodies may choose the method for approving their minutes, including approval by the public body chair alone. I can certainly approve them, but Brittany hasn't finished them. We could also always say, go look at the tape and you can see exactly what we did, by majority vote or by public body or by consent of the body, approved unless there is an objection. When a quorum of a public body approves minutes, however, it must do so during a noticed meeting. So it was on the agenda, she didn't get them done, her schedule didn't provide for them and I didn't sit down and do the minutes for her. So if anyone out there is objecting, uh, then you get the chairman sincere apology and we'll try to get Brittany to finish them and if she can't do them, we'll maybe approve the draft minutes so we can be in somewhat compliance. So that's the story of the minutes. So the only minutes that we have are the June twenty-second, so I make a motion that we waive the reading and approve the minutes.
Second.
Second by Carolyn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Jim Corkins, yes?
Yes.
John Frank, Dan Dupere, Carolyn Marasette, yes? Okay, there any other new business that I need to bring up that wasn't on the agenda? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Dan Dupere, second.
Next.
John Frank, any discussion on the motion? Jim Corkins, yes? To adjourn.
Nope, question on the motion, no, I, yes.
Okay, well, we need to make sure because somebody's making sure we have it all done. John Frank, yes? Dan Dupere, yes?
Yes.
Carolyn Marasette, yes? David aside, yes, chairman of the zoning board is hereby closed, thank you.